All right. How's everyone doing? Good. Seen some nods. All right, welcome everyone to the November 15th, 2023 City of Edina Planning Commission Meeting. On behalf of the rest of the commission, we're grateful that you are here, whether in person or remotely. Your curiosity, your participation and feedback is instrumental to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina, specifically regarding the ways in which we all would like to use our land. So tonight, we have two public hearings. People who want to testify remotely can call the following number, 786-496-5601, and enter conference PIN 3988527. And then when it's your turn, we'll ask you to press star one to get into the queue to speak. On that note, it's important that you understand that any and all feedback has made its way to us before tonight, and we commit to you that we've reviewed it and will consider it as we make our recommendations for approval or denial of certain items. After the public hearings, we have two sketch plan reviews, which is an opportunity for us to provide non-binding feedback for potential development scenarios. And with that, we're going to kick off the meeting. Call to order. Let's do that again. And we'll start with roll call.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. If there are no proposed changes, I'd welcome a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes from October 25th. Same deal.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, next, we have the community comment period tonight, and this is your opportunities to speak about a matter that's not on tonight's agenda. Similar to the public hearing, but this is only for people who are here in person. You have three minutes. You can come up to a podium and speak. When the light turns green, your time begins. When it's amber, you've got 30 seconds left. When it's red, I'll ask you to wrap up. Is anyone here for a community comment? Come on. Okay, maybe next time. All right, we'll move along. So now, we have the public hearing. So the first one is the B 2320 variance request at 3501 and 3503 Galleria. Do a quick rundown so you know what to expect. The planning commission gets a report put together by staff. Staff will provide a presentation based on the findings of that report. We'll turn it back to the commission for some questions, and then we'll give the applicant an opportunity to provide a presentation. Similarly, we'll follow up with questions and then exchange. Then we'll open it to the public hearing. That's your chance again to testify about that particular matter. After we close that, the planning commission will deliberate and make a recommendation. With that, Addison, take it away.
All right, thank you, Chair. Commissioners, this is a variance request at 3501, 3503 Galleria. That's the Galleria Shopping Center located in the Southdale District. It's on the north side of the building, just south of 69th Street West. So this is a look at the property as it exists today. So this request is really a result of, Galleria wishes to do some interior modifications to the building for a future tenant. They have an existing loading dock that's here. The access to that loading dock is off of the east side of the building. It's a fully enclosed loading dock. As part of those modifications, they wish to relocate the loading dock just a little bit to the west side over here and have the access off of the north side of the building. So they would like to construct a drive aisle across the north side of the building connecting the two parking lots so that they can access that loading dock. So the variance is from section 36, 1316 of the Edina City Code that states, "No exposed parking spaces, required stacking spaces, or drive aisles, except that portion of the driveway cross in the public right-of-way to give access to the street, shall be located within 20 feet of a public street right-of-way or within 10 feet of an interior side lot line or rear lot line." So a 20-foot setback is required from the public street right-of-way for the drive aisle. You can see here is their proposed site plan. The drive aisle would be located directly adjacent to the property line, so a zero-foot setback. There are a couple things that are unique about this request, and I guess just the circumstances of the property. So to start, the city actually has quite a bit of right-of-way along 69th Street. So right here, you can see this is the property line. At its closest point, the drive aisle would still be about 14 feet from the edge of the sidewalk and about 20 feet from the edge of the street. That's not the case for other properties in this area. So just with the amount of right-of-way, there would still be a significant buffer there between the drive aisle and the travel portion of the right-of-way. It would also improve some of the site conditions in a few aspects. So there is a code provision in our zoning ordinance that says, "Traffic moving from one part of a parking area to another shall be capable of doing so without using a street." Right now, these two parking lots are not connected unless you wanted to drive around the entire Galleria building. So anybody going from one side to the other has to use 69th Street. So this would be an improvement in that traffic could go from one side to the other without having to use the street. There's also a provision that talks about, "Off-street loading facilities shall be easily accessible from streets with minimum interference from other vehicle and pedestrian traffic." So right now, trucks making deliveries would have to come in off of this access and navigate through this portion of the parking lot. Under the proposed plan, they could come in here and not really have to navigate through any pedestrian or other vehicular traffic to reach that loading dock. And then additionally, we did speak a bit with our fire marshal. While this isn't a requirement by code, even if this were new, he did say it would be an improvement in terms of fire access, so was supportive in that regard as well. Let's see. So just here's some views of the site as it exists today. So it's really just, you know, kind of a blank facade there right now. They would be relocating this transformer as part of the project. So there's the existing loading dock doors. And then these are some renderings that they provided to show what it would look like with the proposed landscaping. So on the landscape plan, all the landscaping is proposed to be within the right-of-way. Our Public Works Director did have concern with the amount of landscaping that's proposed there because they need space for snow storage, plowing 69th Street, and maintaining the sidewalk. He was open to some amount of landscaping being in the right-of-way there. I will add that there's no screening required. It's a fully enclosed loading dock. It's also more than 50 feet setback from the edge of the street. So there's not any screening required, but if Galleria would still like to do some, just to put something up, the Public Works structure was open to some of that being located within the right-of-way. Just another rendering here. So as with any variance, state statute lays out the criteria that the applicant must demonstrate being met in order to grant a variance. So staff has done a review of the request, believes that the variance criteria has been met for a number of the reasons I said. The full analysis is in the staff report, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that. Oh, and then with respect to the last item there, that the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. I just wanted to show kind of some other examples from around the Southdale area where either parking or drive aisle is located closer to the street or closer to the edge of the sidewalk than what is proposed here with this project. So on the left, that's actually on the south side of the Galleria where you can see the parking goes right up kind of to the edge of that sidewalk. On the right is the drive aisle for the US Bank ATM there. That's directly adjacent to the sidewalk. On the left is One Southdale Place, so this was just across the street from the proposed project. You can see parking is about 10 feet from the edge of the sidewalk. And then on the right is Key Cadillac where it's about seven and a half feet. On the left is the Chase Bank property at 70th and France. You can see it's about four feet. And then on the right, Rue de France, about 10 feet from the sidewalk to the parking area. So it shouldn't be incompatible with the surrounding area. So with that, staff is recommending a motion to approve the requested variance subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. We have a deadline of December 14th, 2023 to make a decision on the request. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well. They don't have a presentation, but would be happy to answer questions from you as well.
Thank you, Addison. Fellow commissioners, questions?
It was mentioned in our packets that 69th Street is due for an update?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I forgot to mention that. So going back here, engineering would like to implement a road diet on the section of 69th where they actually reduce the number of travel lanes from two to one in each direction. So as part of that project, when that takes place in the future, there would actually be additional boulevards space here and additional separation between the roadway and this drive aisle. So engineering was not concerned about the separation between the roadway and this drive aisle.
And so when that happens, I'm assuming the sidewalk won't be touched during this project. It would be nice to get the sidewalk away from the street in the future?
Yep. Yep, I think that is their intention.
Okay. And do you know, on the south side, over behind Barnes &amp; Noble, maybe this is a question for the owner, there's another kind of roadway that goes behind the Barnes &amp; Noble around to the ramp? Yeah, the closest part.
Over here?
Yeah. And when you, oh, so when you indicated that roundabout, that's on the...
That was this.
That was this one. And it gets pretty close over there, too, right behind the Barnes &amp; Noble. Right there.
It's right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't know what that dimension is? That's okay.
What's that?
Do you know what that dimension is? How close it gets to the road there?
I don't know exactly how close that is, no. I'm not sure.
Okay, that's fine.
This looked like the closest point that I could find on the site today.
Thank you. And you mentioned there's a transformer on the north side. It looked like there was gas utilities. We've got a map of all of those?
Mm-hmm.
We have locations of those, I'm assuming. So the electrical here is underground?
I believe so.
I think that's it for my questions.
Other questions?
Yeah, do you, do you know, kind of what's motive, like what is motivating the desire to relocate the parking or the loading dock? I mean, is there some sort of, what is, what other kind of renovation is being contemplated for this?
You know, I might let them speak to that. I just know it's to accommodate a future tenant in that space, and so they want to shift some things around. But they could probably speak in more detail as to why they want to move it.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be, that'd be interesting. Okay.
I have one question. So you mentioned there is concern. Could you go back to the proposed landscaping?
Like the rendering of it? Yeah. Yeah.
So from what you described, we could picture that right driveline essentially being boulevard in the future.
Sorry, say that again?
That right driveline would essentially become boulevard in the future, correct?
Right, yep.
So I guess it'd be interesting to understand why we wouldn't encourage that type of planting program and landscaping. There's a lot of examples around this city and others where you have trees close to sidewalks. So is that part of a condition of approval to maintain this landscape plan, or is it to give them flexibility?
So the condition is kind of to defer approval to the Public Works Director. So I did speak with him, and he was open to, you know, some landscaping being there. He indicated he still wanted about 10 feet maintained. You know, two, as you move from west to east, the setback here increases a little bit. So, you know, at the closest point, this is about 14 feet. So if he wants 10 feet for snow storage, that gives you about four feet down here, maybe a little bit more room to increase the landscaping as you move east.
Yeah, just bring it up. There's been other projects historically where, you know, the decision came later out of ease of maintenance, and maybe that's not the best decision. If someone's willing to put that type of investment in landscaping, I'd want to condition that for approval versus deferring it. Are we able to do that as part of this?
I would say anything, I would say the Public Works Director needs to sign up on anything that's going in the right-of-way.
And that's pretty typical, then.
If I might, potentially, we could add a condition that, you know, when additional right-of-way is created there and there's more green space, perhaps at that time, we could look at requiring additional landscaping, subject to approval of the Public Works Director. There might be opportunity to put some landscaping in there with that additional space. You know, maybe that sidewalk potentially moves as well. But they for sure do want to get the boulevard between the sidewalk and the paved portion. So that might be an option.
Yeah, 14 feet's a lot. I mean, I'm just practically speaking, so other thoughts? Questions?
Well, I was wondering, if the landscaping, and we can ask the owner and ask, and also mention to Public Works, I mean, if the, if that landscaping was not evergreen, if it was, you know, annuals or things that grew up from the ground every year, I don't think that would inhibit snow storage.
Yeah. Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, some of the examples you showed of existing places where, you know, it encroaches on the 20 feet, there were low walls there. So is that something we could, you know, if we're not going to have, if we're not going to have any other kind of visual separation, you know, and actually, if there's a wall there, how do they do snow removal there? I don't know.
Right.
Seems inconsistent.
Yeah, I'm not sure. There's a little bit of boulevard there, which, you know, there's not in this case. The sidewalk is right up to the edge of the street.
Right, but there's 14 feet on the other side or whatever.
Yep.
Any other questions? Maybe give an opportunity to applicant to come forward, say something or address a couple of the questions. Commissioner Bornstein, you want to start? I know you had a question about the motive.
Sure. I'm Greg Houck. I've been involved, I'm an architect, I've been involved with the Galleria for 17 years and both owners, and so I know, I have a lot of history on the site. So this is like the oldest part of, that's kind of remaining of the old Gabberts Building, which is one of the original buildings. If you were to build this today, you would never put, you know, the loading dock on the outside corner. It's one of the more prominent corners if you drive by there on the, on the site, for sure, on the north side. So the issue is, is to redevelop that and get a new tenant in there, it's almost impossible with that, with that loading dock there because that's the, that's, wants to be like the main corner, right? That'll be the beautiful corner. One other issue with that, so when we built, I was involved when Crate &amp; Barrel was built, and there was a tent, so at that time, there was still, there was foresight to say, like, we might at some point need to redevelop Gabberts, okay? And Crate &amp; Barrel uses that loading dock now. And so in their lease, they, we have the right to move it and just to that place. And so that, that's kind of the only option for us. I mean, and, but I do feel like it's the right option, so it'll be less conspicuous there. And we are going from one door, from two dock doors to one. And so it'll sit, you know, kind of in between two beautiful facades there.
Sorry, was there, I thought I saw in one of these diagrams, like a patio or something like that being envisioned for that side of the building, or did I miss, did I miss that?
There's no, there's no patio.
All right.
On the...
Or something.
Sorry, I, so we have, if you go to the plan. So on the east side of the, of the building, so that's, right now, that's mostly landscaped area. We're building it out, there'd be an upper patio.
Upper, okay.
So that is anticipating that we would have some sort of furniture use. And so we've had, so we've been involved trying to redevelop this for many years, and so we can't, we, we're close to having that set, and, but, so that's the idea, is that that would be like, kind of like Restoration Hardware across the street with, has like really nice, you know, patio furniture out there. That would be a raised patio.
Okay, got it.
Any other question? Yeah. Commissioner Felton?
So to access this loading dock, the doors go up, the truck goes in, the doors close.
Correct.
So these are box trucks, they're not semis or...
This is, this is able to accommodate a semi.
Is it really?
Yes, and so it's very, it's a, it's a large dock, yeah.
Okay.
So that is specifically for the Crate &amp; Barrel tenant because they, they'll get, they will, all of their little, you know, all the little tableware that they get, they get shipments once a week at least.
Okay.
A big semi.
Well, that would be nice, if the semis weren't going past 40 cars and only going past two cars. And I wanted to ask, so, once again, the landscaping, you're showing the trees on there and the landscaping on there. Can you talk about that a little bit more?
We're open to collaborating with whatever we, between planning commission and Public Works agrees to. I mean, from a retail standpoint, we like to have more open, you know, we want to be able to see the facades. The facades are, you know, except for the loading dock will be, are beautiful, right? And so if I had to mind drawers, I'd just have either birch or Quaking Aspen or something out there that works with the character of the building. We have that on other parts of the building, and, you know, it'd look nice.
It'd be nice to extend the, a similar tree that you have in other places, right? And you can also decorate that at the holidays. I mean, I think trees would be great as landscaping. I think I had one other. No. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I just want to get a sense of the impact to, and maybe timing, impact to folks that are parking and the timing of when that's going to happen while the construction is happening. So I know that, that lot right now, during peak periods, it's really hard to find parking. You try to go to Barnes &amp; Noble at 10 o'clock, and it's like, you can't find any spots. And if we're going to take up these, these spots here during the construction phase, I'm guessing it's going to push a lot of parking maybe in a different lot or something like that. But just share some ideas on like, if you have any kind of accommodation during the shopping season or timing.
So it'll be, we will, if this gets approved, but we're going to do this as soon as we can. And, and from a shopping standpoint, we, obviously, we don't want to impact parking at all during high season. And so we never, we, you know, avoid doing construction period usually. So this would be in the off period here in the, you know, after the holidays would be the goal. The, I think the impact here won't be too bad. It'll be probably done in two, two, two parts where you do, you know, the northern part and the, and I guess the, the western cut there, which really doesn't impact much at all. The part that'll impact parking is when we turn the corner on the northeast corner because there's some, it needs to, the grade has to change, and we've got to lose a couple spots. I don't, I mean, the time of year that we're doing this, it shouldn't impact parking demand at all. And one thing that people don't realize, we, we do have enough stalls, it's just that they're all, a lot of them are in the garage there, the parking ramp, and people, it's just not used as much. So next time you go to Barnes &amp; Noble, the trick is you go park underneath, like if you go down the lower levels, always spots down there, and it's warm down there, so.
Thank you.
Mind if I flip in real quick to, let's see, can you click through some of these images to the one that, the one that shows the rendering of, the one that shows the rendering of the new drive, no, the next one. Yep. So like, what are we, what are we looking at here on the, like, the left side of the image? What's this? Like, is this kind of how we're envisioning this structure looking?
No. So I, we don't have a lease yet, so this is, we've just, I mean, this is my concern about showing it like this because I'm just showing a box, okay? This will be, this is like the beautiful corner. And so this will be glass, this will be nice materials, this will be redone to be, I mean, that's, that is the point, too, is that we can, we're recapturing this corner to be redone.
Is the idea that people would, I mean, is this some sort of, would kind of interact with that side of the structure a little bit more than they can now?
Yes, I think so. It's really, I'm, that is up to the tenant to design, but that's what we're, that's how we're, we're leaning them that way? That makes sense?
Yeah. So don't pay attention to this picture too much.
Right. It'll, I promise it'll be beautiful, so.
Well, yeah, because you said beautiful earlier, and then I was like, I saw that. I didn't know.
Amazon fulfillment center.
But like, we've, you know, we've had a lot of meetings here, and people have different understandings of what that subjectively means. So, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as mentioned, this is public hearing, so we will turn it over to the public hearing portion of this, and maybe while, we'll give some people a chance to wait who are tuning in remotely. If you are doing so and you'd like to testify again, please call 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 3988527. And then press star one on your keypad to get in the queue to speak. And we'll give you time to do that, and while we do, we will turn it over to those who are here in person. So if anyone is here to speak about this matter and like to testify, please come up to a podium. You have three minutes. State your full name, address. When it turns green, you got three minutes. When it turns red, your time's up. Anyone here that would like to speak? See no one rushing to it, I guess we'll look to the virtual room. Is there anyone waiting to speak in there?
No, we do not have anyone on the line right now. Would you like to wait one minute to see?
Let's do 30 seconds since we already gave them about 30 seconds.
Starting now.
All right. And sorry, no elevator music still. I'm sorry.
It has been 30 seconds, and no one has joined the line to speak, so I think it's safe to proceed.
Thank you. Welcome. A motion to close the public hearing, then.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. The public hearing is closed. So as discussed, we'll bring it back and share thoughts, and then make a recommendation for approval or denial. Just look around. Anyone have any comments or questions they'd like to share? Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I think, you know, just looking at the, the practical purposes of what the request is, is trying to do, to connect those two parking lots, I think is a really good idea. I know many folks have to drive out onto 69th to get back in, and that could be a hassle sometimes, so being able to do it... sometimes, so being able to do it within the property is, is such a good move. I was concerned about the trees, right, because we're going to be taking some of them out to create this new driveway, and it seems like the tenant is very open and willing to, to, you know, maybe even put too much trees, right? And so I think working with the City Works Director, coming up with a really good tree and landscaping plan would be amazing here, and I could see this as being a great asset to this area, you know, just thinking during the holiday season, as Commissioner Feld, sorry, was saying, you could just put Christmas tree lights, you know, coming on this during that time, and I would just really light up the Galleria, you know, make it an attractive place for folks to come and shop and to help the economy. So this seems like it's a really practical change, there's some precedent in the closeness of the driveway to the street in other parts in that area, so it's not something new. So I'm, I'm very positive on this change, and I think it'd be a good practical move to connect those two driveways.
Any other comments?
I guess my, my only add-on to that is, you know, I agree with that, it does seem like the landscaping kind of matters maybe here, you know, it looks nice in the picture, but, but just imagine what it would look like if that's not there, concrete, you know, moonscape potentially, or something like that, it could look like the, the entrance of US Bank Stadium or something, and it, it might matter, like, if you're thinking about whether, you know, this is kind of consistent with the essential character of the area, having some of this buffering that we see might, might kind of, might kind of actually tip the scales on that factor. So I'm open to what the rest of the commissioners think about, how to make sure we get a good result like this, instead of, you know, all of a sudden there's not room for snow or something, and it's just kind, it's just like a concrete space. So, anything, anything we can do to kind of require something more like, like, like a green buffer with trees, since we're losing trees, that would maintain kind of that feel that, that we have around, that character and feel that we have around this property, but otherwise, I support kind of the rationale for it.
Yeah, Carrie.
I might offer up a revised condition for you to consider in that regard, that number four, condition number four be revised to a revised landscape plan within the right-of-way, subject to review and approval of the City Forester and Public Works Director, that way we can get some input from the City Forester as well, as to what, what could work in that area and still get around the snow plowing issue.
Commissioner Feld.
I think for me, I'm more interested when 69th Street gets a makeover and the ability to create a sidewalk that's separate from the street, because we have all the meandering paths back in there, if we can add another kind of meandering sidewalk that feels like it's separate and wide enough to accommodate more than just pedestrians. And I, obviously, it's retail, it's high-end retail, they want bright lights and big glass windows, so when this corner gets remade, I'm sure there's going to be a lot to look at, especially in the winter months, so I think trees might be enough, you know, that they're green in the summer and deciduous in the winter, and then you get to see when it's dark here for four months, you get to see, look at something around there. So I think I'm more interested in how that sidewalk interacts with the property and the street in the future, and I agree with bringing the forester on, on this one. Yeah, and anything that, I mean, semi-truck drivers are real, I've watched some of them with all of the construction that's happened, and they're really good drivers, I worry more about the vehicular traffic than the semi-truck drivers, but I, I think it's a good move, so, go for it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, so my concern would be also with the sidewalk, and I wouldn't want anything that would be too close to the sidewalk, that would make it uncomfortable, you know, if a truck's doing deliveries or whatever, so, but this seems like it's far enough away that I think it makes sense to do in this area, and I also agree that it needs some sort of, you know, separation from the building with landscaping, I think that's really important, so, thank you.
Carrie, I have a question for you, so, there are times where, you know, the public right-of-way is being altered for a development, and the developer contributes to a change within that. So, so why can we not kind of condition some of that landscaping, unless overruled, you know, or, because we've seen stuff happen where we have narrow strips of some nice landscaping, then it goes into site plan, it gets developed, and it gets concreted over, because that's easier.
Right, yeah, we certainly have done landscaping in the right-of-way, that's where I was thinking, this revised language, where we get some length, we get some landscaping in there.
Because trees like that, I mean, snow piles up against it, doesn't take up, doesn't interrupt that much.
Yeah, and I, I think he did say, you know, there could be some trees, just not as many as, as are shown.
Okay.
I might recommend also to address the future, and this would be more on the city, because it's a city project where we're narrowing the streets, that landscaping be considered in the boulevard at the time of reconstruction of 69th, that's more on staff, but being a condition, we can put a tickler in our system and inform the city engineer that we can consider something in the boulevard.
Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
Well, in that case, I'd suggest a tickler for a multi-use path there, so like Commissioner Feld said, having more than just a sidewalk there, that, that street really should have a multi-use path there, thanks.
So in general, from what I'm hearing, it seems like there's solid consensus around supporting the request at hand, and then just so other people who are tuning in understand, a lot of times when people want to do something with their property, and we generally support that, there often is a public realm component that we care about, too, so it seems like that's something we just want to make sure we get right in addition to the, supporting the proposed change. With that, I guess I'd welcome a motion, though, you have a comment? Okay.
Yeah, just a quick question, actually, for Director Teague, and this suggests to help me understand a little bit more, but if the Public Works Director and the City Forester get together and talk about what should be done there, I know we have a tree ordinance where we need to, if you take some trees down, you have to replace them, but if the Public Works Director think that the concern over snow and the safety of where snow goes, would that trump essentially the, the City Forester's ideas around landscaping?
Yeah, I think it might. Because it is in the right-of-way, but it sounds like the Public Works Director is open to some landscaping, just not the density that's shown in, in the, in the plans, so I think there is a compromise there, where we could get some trees, just not as, not as many.
Okay, and it's not recommended that we write that in as a requirement to have it, right, or you would prefer it to be a discussion with the Public Works Director and the City Forester?
Yeah, I, I would change, I would recommend changing condition four to revie, to read, revise the landscape plan in the right-of-way, subject to review and approval of the City Forester and Public Works Director, and we can work with the property owner on, on what's appropriate there.
Okay, so just, just to, so I understand, it's revised, we put that condition in, we pass it, the plan's revised, and the Public Works Director says, there's not enough space for snow, got to get rid of those trees, what, what happens? Is it just, it just doesn't have landscaping then, because?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think that's the concern that we're trying to avoid, like, that's the scenario we're trying to, like, avoid landing in, where, because these, and folks, they think about different considerations, other than maybe like how the realm looks and feels, you think about like engineering concepts and, you know, how big, how much traffic flow and stuff like that, so, you know, is there another way to kind of make sure that it's not just vetoed, you know, there, I don't know, that's just kind of what I'm thinking.
Well, what I keyed in on there, the wording of that revision, right, was that submitted to approval by, sorry, the Public Works Director and the City Forester, right, so, I mean, if we write it that way, in that it's, it's to be at least an agreement between the forester and the Public Works Director, I feel like there's less chance of it turning into just a concrete block, right, because the forester has to sign off, I'm hoping that the City Forester would advocate for some type of landscaping there.
He would, yeah, and I think they, by requiring a revised landscape plan in the right-of-way, that there will be something there.
I would, I would just add, too, that it, it won't be concrete between the driveway, between the drive aisle and the sidewalk, at a minimum, it would be sod, so it wouldn't be concrete, and then as far as, you know, the City Forester's role, any trees that are removed, you know, they're still going to be required to comply with the tree replacement requirement, it's just a question of whether they would be in the right-of-way, or whether they would need to find another location on private property to locate those trees, so they'll still be required to replace the trees, and again, the Public Works Director was, was very open to working out something, it was just the, the current plan he had some concerns with, so it's just scaling it down a little bit.
Okay, what were the, just curiosity, just what were the concerns, like, the actual concerns?
About the density of the vegetation and not having enough room for, for snow storage, was what I was told.
Okay, I just, I just don't know the best, so, in this scenario, there wouldn't be enough space for, what would happen to the snow in this scenario? Wouldn't be somewhere for it to go?
I'm, I'm assuming that the ambiguity of what was drawn there created some concern.
Okay.
Because if they were bushes, and the bushes get damaged during snow, so I, I think the, I think if I was Public Works, I would say, are those bushes, are those evergreens? I think it's just the ambiguity, I think we're worrying about it too much.
Oh, okay, you think it's the stuff that's sitting behind the trees?
Yeah, I think, it's not the trees, I don't think trees really prohibit snow being, I think it's the ambiguity of what's drawn, that's all. I don't think it's a concern.
I think the message is clear of what this commission recommends and would like to see, so as long as, you know, in the future we drive by, we hope none of us or anyone out there is angry. Are we, are we good, or at least clear on kind of what those potential revisions are and incorporating them potentially into a motion? You have someone that'd like to take a stab at that?
I can, I can give a little. All right, so, you know, a motion to approve the requested variance at 3501 and 3503 Galleria, with the conditions listed in the staff report, with condition four being revised such that they require review, the public right-of-way, the landscaping there by the Public Works Director and the City Forester. Don't know if I'm missing any other revisions there, as I say that. Okay.
If you wanted to add, Commissioner Miranda's number seven.
Oh, sorry, along with revision number, I guess, or condition number seven, proposed by Commissioner Miranda. That's the full motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Thank you, good luck on the project. All right, on to the next public hearing, as mentioned, we have two, so this is number two of two. And this is a comprehensive plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, and site plan review for 6016 Vernon Avenue, and here we have Director Carrie Teague to present, same format as before.
Okay, thank you, Chair members of the commission, a site, the vast majority of you, I believe, are, recall, about a year ago, we had a proposal for a comprehensive plan amendment for a restaurant on this site, comprehensive plan amendment for, you know, more intense commercial development, that was denied ultimately by the city council. So the property is located west here of City Hall on Vernon, it's this triangular-shaped piece just east of Olinger and Highview. The site exists today as the, the building that you see on the screen, for the last 50-plus years, this has been a gas station and an automobile repair shop. Couple of other renderings of the site, so this site is unique in that it's guided in our comprehensive plan for medium-density residential, that was established back in 1980, the city's comprehensive plan at that time, and that designation has carried through with all of the updates since then. The site is zoned, PCD4 Plan Commercial District, within that district, gas stations are allowed, car washes, auto repair. Met Council now requires cities' land use plans to be consistent with the zoning, back in 1980, we didn't, it was more of a future planning exercise, but we do need to reconcile that at some point here. What the proposal is this evening is to just remodel the existing structure for Green Drop, which is a donation collection center, they would take in gently-used clothes, shoes, and household goods, they propose to be open from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 363 days of the year, they would just be closed on Thanksgiving and Christmas, there would be an employee, up to two, onsite at all times, when, when the facility is open, there would be no outside storage on the site, no semi-trailers parked on the site, once a week, a 16-foot box truck would come in and take away all the collected goods, so again, that would take place once a week. So here's a look at the site plan, so again, the existing building, it's just, just spruced up a little bit, as shown in the, the graphics there, they would put in a new parking area, essentially the site is almost entirely paved surface, so they would reduce some of that and create some additional sod and landscaping. So there's a lot being requested here, the comprehensive plan amendment for medium-density residential to neighborhood service, so that would establish a new land use category within the comprehensive plan, that last proposal was for really our least-intensive commercial designation in the comprehensive plan, which is a neighborhood node, this is a 16,000-square-foot site, one property, it's not really a node, so with this designation, essentially, and we'll, I'll show you a graphic here in a minute, just would allow the uses that are allowed within the zoning ordinance today and this additional use. There's also a zoning ordinance amendment to go along with that, to again, allow that use within the existing PCD Plan Commercial District for zoning district, and then, should those two be approved, a site plan review. So this is our pyramid of discretion that we pull out from time to time, we're down at the bottom, the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning ordinance, so the city has complete discretion whether to approve or deny this, just simply if you don't like this, this use for the site. So first, looking at the comprehensive plan amendment, so again, guided medium-density residential, the proposal is to create this new neighborhood service district, this idea came out of the Cahill District Plan, where we were introducing a new neighborhood business node at the intersection of 77th, just off of Highway 100, there's those commercial, the Shell gas station, there's a Caribou to the north, anyway, we were introducing a new land use, we're not taking that exact language, but that's the idea, in creating a new district here, or a new, new land use category in the comprehensive plan. So this is how it would read, neighborhood service, and the primary uses being a small-scale service use, including auto service, repair, and a donation collection center. service use, including auto service, repair, and a donation collection center. The language below, that's the existing medium-density residential. So within this site, the density range allowed in the comprehensive plan is between five and 12 units an acre. Based on the size of the property, they could put four residential units on the site to be consistent with the existing comprehensive plan, and it would take a rezoning likely to match the zoning of the property to the west. You can see the properties here are zone PRD3, so that would be the zoning that would be required for a medium-density development. In looking at the zoning ordinance amendment, so, again, it would be an amendment to that PCD4 to add donation collection center to the list of allowed uses. Again, automobile service centers, car washes, gas stations currently allowed. But we would put specific conditions. That would include that all donations be stored inside the building, no outside storage, as I mentioned, at least one employee on the site at all times, hours of operation limited to the 10 to 6. Maximum size of the building would be limited to 1,300 square feet, and no retail sales from the building would be allowed. So this ordinance amendment would have an impact on 11 sites that are currently zoned PCD4 in the city of Edina. So there are two at 54th and France, Edina Tire, and I'll show a map here in a minute, four in the Grandview area, the Holiday, the Speedway, and BP, and the Grandview Auto. There's the Firestone Station out on the Southdale site on 66th, the Mr. Car Wash on Viking Drive, the Shell Station I mentioned earlier on 77th, and the Grandview Tire on Vernon, or on 70th and Amundson, and then the current property. So again, here's our subject property, the four in the Grandview District. There are two at 54th and France, the Firestone, and the Car Wash on Viking Drive, and the Shell Station, and then the Murphy Auto on 70th and Amundson. All of these sites are, the largest site is the Shell Station. That's just a hair over an acre. I believe it was around 50,000 square feet. All of the others are under an acre in that 26,000-square-foot range. I think the biggest is the Holiday Station, which is just under an acre in the Grandview So review of the site plan. Here's a look at the existing paved surface on the site today, all that red area. Again, they would tear that all out and put in a new parking lot. Based on the square footage of the building, the use going on on our city code would require three parking stalls. There was also a parking and traffic study done. Ed Terhar is with us this evening on the line, should we have any questions about traffic or parking. Based on the proposed use here and the previous use, the auto repair generated about 120 trips per day. This use would generate 72 trips, so would generate less traffic than what was on the site. You can see the landscaping. Also, there's a fence around the property that's kind of in a poor state of repair. They're proposing to put in a new six-foot cedar fence along the north lot line, west lot line, and then go to the driveway entrance here. In terms of existing, so everything is existing on the site. In terms of the building, the, as I mentioned, the parking and drive aisles are non-conforming. They're improving those non-conforming conditions, going basically from zero feet on Vernon and Eden Prairie Road to seven and six. So there's no variance requested there. This is all just improving a non-conforming condition. So primary issues to consider here, is the comprehensive plan amendment reasonable, and is the zoning ordinance amendment reasonable? So again, for this project, just to remind the commission, you have complete discretion. Staff is recommending approval, really due primarily to the fact that the site has been zoned for 50-plus years for auto-oriented uses, and the proposed use would be considered a little bit less intense than what has been there. This proposal could almost be seen as a temporary use. You know, medium-density may be the most appropriate use here, just given the adjacent properties, all residential around. But this could be seen as a temporary use until the site were to completely redevelop and the building removed. So again, the staff is supporting the comprehensive plan amendment for those reasons, generate less traffic, less impact than the existing use. Again, it's supported by the existing roads, and given that, that more intense commercial proposal for the site was denied about a year ago. In terms of the zoning ordinance, staff would support that. The added use within these districts is less intensive than those other uses that are currently allowed. All of the other sites are generally small in size, so we wouldn't see any large donation center. And just given the fact that those other sites are located in commercial areas, the chances of redevelopment of those sites for this type of use would be remote. So I will stop there, answer any questions you may have, and the GreenDrop folks are here with the presentation as well.
Thank you, Kerry. Fellow commissioners, any questions for Kerry? All right.
Just a couple. So, could this use fit into any existing zoning category today?
In some of our planned commercial districts? I don't believe I have, well, yeah, so it could fit in the Southdale District, our PCD2 and 3.
And then, so the neighborhood service category would be a new comprehensive plan category?
It would.
Is there any precedent for creating new comprehensive plan categories for single sites?
With, for a single site, at least not during my time, again, the idea kind of came out of the Cahill Small Area Plan, where we were creating new districts. Generally, that's done when we're, during the 10-year update time. So, yeah, this is unique for the last 20 years, say.
And do you remember, I wasn't actually on the commission, but what did the commission recommend with respect to the proposed restaurant?
Yeah, I don't believe it was a unanimous. Some liked the restaurant, some didn't, but a lot of it centered around the size of the restaurant. They were proposing quite a large expansion, basically doubling the size. They had outdoor dining on the roof. It was short-parked, so there was concern about parking spilling out into the neighborhood. So those were the biggest concerns at that time.
All right. Got it. Thanks.
Kerry, what's the history of the neighborhood node category? Wasn't that a newer one? Did that come with Wooddale Valley View, or was it there before?
I believe that, was that 2008? It was either 2008 or this, or it might have been Valley View. I'd have to look, but it's definitely within...
Less than 10, 15 years?
Yes, yeah.
I guess the question was just, you know, it's okay to add one if it makes sense and kind of in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Just a quick question on the pyramid of discretion. So I know we have complete discretion. I just want to understand a little bit more about that idea. With complete discretion, I'm assuming here that the planning commission and the city council could make a decision amongst themselves, like, we could recommend something, the city council couldn't vote up or down. But typically speaking, when we have complete discretion, does it also mean that we could invite neighborhood to give input into something? Is that generally how you would also consider us having complete discretion? We could decide whether or not we want the neighborhood as well to give input on something?
Well, like any other, whether it's a zoning ordinance update, or a rezoning, or really anything within the pyramid, with the exception of building permits, we're seeking public input. So we've received a lot of comments on Better Together, so you can use those how you see fit to make your decision.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Felk?
Can you briefly tell us what came through on Better Together?
Yeah, initially, a lot of non-support for the project. It was from a lot of people that wanted to see a restaurant on this site. They didn't think this was, you know, what's the benefit to the community, those kinds of comments. Recently, there have been some more positive feedback that has, that's come through, saying that it is, it's not an intensive use and a better fit compared to those more intensive uses.
And do you know of any other donation centers within Edina's boundaries?
I don't believe we have any in the city.
I can only think of a couple adjacent. I couldn't think of anything in Edina. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Kerry. Now we'll offer it up to the applicant to provide a presentation. Please come up, state full name, address, and tell us why you want to do what you want to do and a little bit about it.
Yeah, that would be great. Thanks, Kerry. Good evening, members of the commission, city staff. My name is Ron D. I'm the Director of Real Estate for GreenDrop. GreenDrop was founded in 2012 in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania, as a solution to unattended donation bins. Many of you have seen unattended donation bins around the region and around the country. These are metal boxes that collect charitable donations on a wide variety of organizations, and they're often overstuffed, unmaintained. Kids climb in them, people start fires in them, they're a nuisance to the community. GreenDrop was created as an employee-staffed collection center. We have two full-time employees there, seven days a week. They show up at 9:30 a.m., they open at 10 a.m., and they close at 6 p.m. Donations are not accepted when our employees are not there. You may say, Mr. D, how is that possible? What if somebody drops something off in the, when you're closed? We have six internet-connected security cameras on this building. It's monitored 24/7 by a third-party service. If anything happens to get dropped off when we're not open, seven days a week, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., we send a truck out to pick it up immediately. Worst-case scenario is I can't have a landlord or an owner of any of our properties or community show up in the morning and say, Mr. D, there are things in the parking lot left here. It just doesn't happen. We've been in business since 2012. We have 63 GreenDrop locations operating in nine states and Washington, D.C. All of our locations are partnered with a not-for-profit partner. Here in the state of Minnesota, we are going to be partnered with the Disabled American Veterans. Josh Furtasnik is here with us this evening, along, as well as Crystal Enquist, who's our operational specialist. The way our business works is area residents come to GreenDrop and drop off slightly-used household goods from their house, anything in your house less than 50 pounds that doesn't contain a liquid. One of the comments that came through on the website with the city is that we don't accept baby goods, for some reason, or baby clothing. That's not true. We take anything in your house that is less than 50 pounds. The reason we put the 50-pound limit on is that we don't want our employees lifting anything or using equipment to lifting anything that's going to cause harm or injury to them. So anything in your house, decor, kitchen appliances, clothing, shoes, books, anything in your house that you are willing to donate to GreenDrop on behalf of the Disabled American Veterans of the state of Minnesota. The way the business model works is we convert the donated goods into cash by purchasing these goods from the Disabled American Veterans. They thereby get the cash from the purchase of these goods. The goods are then sold at Savers thrift stores. In January of 2021, GreenDrop as a company was purchased by Savers. Savers has 10 stores in Minnesota. We purchase these goods from Disabled American Veterans. The goods are then sold at the Savers stores, and that is a for-profit business. GreenDrop is a for-profit company that is collecting donated goods on behalf of Disabled American Veterans. We are opening all over the country. We've had great success. One of the things that's unique about our donation collection centers is we survey our customers, our donors, if you will. This year to date, we've had 7,000 responses on our website. On a scale of one to five, we are rated 4.9. Our donors have a great experience. Our donors, it's important to note, don't get out of their cars. They will pull onto the property. As you can see from this drive aisle, they'll pull up. Parallel to the building, one of our uniformed GreenDrop employees will greet them at their automobile. They'll generally, somebody that they've already met before, they often say, Mrs. Smith, it's great to see you. How did John do in the soccer game yesterday? That's awesome, congratulations. What do you have today? I have two bags of donated clothing in the trunk. They pop open the trunk, our uniformed attendant takes the bags out of the trunk, they carry it inside to the building. Everything is stored inside of the building, nothing is stored outside of the building, ever. We do not allow that. It's very, very sacred to us to not allow any storage outside of the building at all. This building is large enough that we can contain a week's worth of donations inside the building. As Mr. Teague mentioned, we'll have a 16-foot box truck come, pick up the donations once a week, transport them to one of the 10 Savers stores in the area, where it gets sorted and tagged and put on the floor for sale later on. That's who we are, that's what we do. If you have a moment, I'd like to have Josh come up and explain how the GreenDrop business benefits the Disabled American Veterans. Is that possible?
Sure. Very good. Thank you.
I was requested to come in here and talk a little bit about the DAV and our relationship. So for you that don't know, the DAV, Disabled American Veterans Department of Minnesota, is a 501(c)(4) chartered veteran service organization, very similar to the American Legion or the VFW. People are usually familiar with the VFW or the American Legion because they have their posts and buildings. DAV does not have that. We do have 32 chapters throughout the state of Minnesota, but we do not have buildings. So we've had a relationship with Savers since about 2007. I've had the position I'm in as the Director of Operations and Deputy Adjutant with the DAV since 2012, so about 11 years now. Part of the reason why we do the collections of second-hand items, and it's not just the stores, we have the 27 chapters throughout the state of Minnesota, and then our Metro Residential Collection Service that goes around and picks things up. But part of that because Savers is a for-profit company, their business model is they work with a nonprofit in the region, they happen to choose the DAV. We generate 70% roughly of our operational revenue, providing programs and services to veterans and their families throughout the state through that program, whether it's donations directly to the stores, or our chapters and our trucks picking things up. Reason why is our national constitution bylaws restrict us from monetary donations, and we can only request monetary donations by direct personal contact of members and friends of members. So going after the second-hand items is kind of our workaround for that. Next year, we'll have our centennial, so the DAV of Minnesota's been around for 100 years. We've got about 19,000 members in the state of Minnesota, all veterans that were injured or wounded during their military service. The way I understand the project, and this will be the first location in the state of Minnesota, but it's like, if you've ever been to one of the Savers' unique thrift stores, it's just the community donation center without the retail site. So it will be operating like that, the way I understand it. I guess I don't want to take up everybody's time tonight, but any, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Any questions for either of the representatives? Yeah? Commissioner Felk?
Mr. D?
Yes?
You mentioned that only three or four cars show up at a time. Where did you get that information?
So, we've been in business, as I mentioned, from 2012. We have 63 existing locations operating around the United States and nine states in the Washington, D.C. area. We know from our own internal data, on average, we get four cars per hour, four donor vehicles per hour. So that's one car roughly every 15 minutes. Does that, they're not scheduled, obviously, they don't make appointments. So could two cars show up at the same time? Sure. Are Saturdays and Sundays probably a little bit busier than the middle of the week? Sure, they are. But on average, we get about four donor vehicles per... They don't make appointments. So could two cars show up at the same time? Sure. Are Saturdays and Sundays probably a little bit busier than the middle of the week? Sure, they are. But on average, we get about four donor vehicles per hour. As I mentioned, they don't park, they pull up. They're usually there for two or three minutes, depending on how long a conversation they have from our attendance. I should also mention that if the donor volunteers their email address, we can vol, we can email them a receipt for their donation with the Disabled American Veterans logo on it, and then you can use that for your own personal tax deductions. The other thing I wanted to mention just briefly is, again, if, there were some concerns that were voiced on the city website that said, hey, I've been to some other donor locations throughout the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, and I've seen lines and lines of cars, you know, queued up at the location. That generally doesn't happen with Green Drop because, again, number one, you're not getting out of your vehicle, you're just parking, you're opening the hatchback or the trunk, we're taking the donations out of your vehicle for you and carrying them in, and you're on your way. Most of our donors are repeat donors, so again, we already have their email address, and if they'd like a receipt, we can email it to them. If it were to happen that this location was very, very busy, I just want to let you know that we are committed to putting extra attendance on-site if we had to in order to make sure that we do not have any track-up backups on the road. We're not going to, you know, allow this to turn into a traffic situation. As Mr. Teague did mention, the traffic study that was contracted for and purchased for by the city did indicate that this is a significantly less intensive use than the previous use to gas the automobile repair shop that was on the property. I think the traffic study suggested about 72 trips per day, 77 trips per day. That would be, based on our current experience with our existing 63 locations, that would be a lot. That would be significantly more than we typically see.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly want to thank Josh for his service. I think, you know, we have a lot of respect for veterans. A couple of questions about the business. So I think, Ron, I think you mentioned that you partnered with the Veterans Organization. Do you partner with different nonprofits? Or do you have a selected list? Like, tell me a little bit more about how do you lead to in your partnerships?
Sure. When Green Drop was founded in 2012 in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania, we were originally partnered with the Loyal Order of the Purple Heart and the American Red Cross. When you came to Green Drop, you could select which not-for-profit partner you would like your donations to be collected on behalf of. Many of our locations throughout the United States are partnered with the American Red Cross. Because we had a long-term existing relationship here in the state of Minnesota with Savers and the Disabled American Veterans, we decided when we came here to Minnesota with Green Drop that we would continue that partnership. So the 10 Savers stores here in Minnesota have been partnered with Disabled American Veterans for many, many years, and bringing Green Drop to the area, just wanted to continue that relationship because of, you know, the partnership we have with them. I should mention that many of the Savers stores, our parent company, have donation centers at the store. The concept of Green Drop was to make it more convenient to make, to allow donors to make donations. When we surveyed our donors at the Savers stores throughout the United States and Canada and Australia, we have over 300 stores in three countries, the United States, Canada, and Australia. When we served them, surveyed them about donations, the number-one criteria for them was convenience. So Green Drop lends itself to be able to be in the neighborhood closer to the donors rather than having the donors have to get in the car and drive to a Savers location. They can come directly to the Green Drop. As Mr. Teague recommended or referenced, this is only a donation center. There are no sales taking place at Green Drop. This is not a retail facility of any kind.
Thank you. That's great. What's not allowed? What's not allowed to be dropped off at us?
Anything that has liquid in it. More than 50 pounds and a liquid, we will not take it. So if you bring in a large, you know, sofa, that's, you know, too big for one of our attendants to carry and put in the building, or you brought in an aquarium that had some kind of liquid in it, or some other piece of equipment from your kitchen that had liquid in it, we would not take it. No hazardous materials whatsoever, obviously. Nothing over 50 pounds, and no liquids.
In terms of business viability, typically, how long does a Green Dot drop-off location last? And, you know, what's the economics? What's a trigger point to decide whether or not this is a continual operation or something that should be dissolved?
So we've had locations that have been open since 2012. This particular location, we have signed a five-year lease. We would like to stay there for a minimum of five years. That is our commitment to the landowner. We do have a clause in the lease that would allow us to stay for an additional five years. The shortest lease we've ever had would be one year. But we generally don't close locations. I should mention to you that we have at least half a dozen municipalities that are landlords of ours. In other words, we have located Green Drop on municipal-owned property, on city-owned land. They are the landlord. And we've never been asked to leave a location by a municipality or a landlord. We've never had a landlord or municipality come to us and say, hey, guys, this isn't working, you need to close this, close this up and move. It's never happened.
So in this current arrangement with the landowner, you have a five-year committed lease.
Correct.
Let's just say the landowner says, you know what? I could do something else with this piece of land. They can't break that lease, right? You're committed to five years.
We're committed to five years. Yeah, they could not break that lease until we would leave after the five-year commitment.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I know currently for me, whenever I drop off goods, I would drive to St. Louis Park. There's a Goodwill, I think it's about a lifetime, out there. Who's your competition in this, in this region?
Crystal, do you want to answer that? Who are other donation competition businesses in the area?
Generally, it would be general.
Yeah. I do know that, you know, Goodwill generally partners with a wide variety of not-for-profit partners, where, you know, we generally partner with one particular not-for-profit partner within the area, as in with the state of Minnesota with Disabled American Veterans. And that, the benefits of that stay here in the state, correct?
Other than supporting some events, we have Winter Sports Clinic for veterans.
Sure.
Normally, I can project, but. We do have some DAV national events. We have a golf event down in Iowa. We have a Winter Sports Clinic in conjunction with the VA Medical Center that's held in Colorado every year. But our support for that, revenue for that goes for Minnesota veterans to participate at those events. Other than that, the lion's share, I'd say 99%, stays within the confines of Minnesota. Also, I was just thinking, you had the question earlier about the residents and the feedback, and we did go out and meet with the residents here a few months ago and had a forum on-site.
Can I just elaborate on that for a moment? The last week of June, we sent out 192 letters to area residents and invited them to an informational meeting at the Edina Community Center, the Senior Citizen Center. We had about 35 residents show up from the 192 letters that we sent out. We listened to their feedback, their concerns, and a lot of their concerns and feedback were incorporated into the site plan that you see today. A lot of it was regarding traffic flow, landscaping, the fence around the property, and architectural concerns, those things. So we did, as I said, we invited 192 addresses to this meeting. We had about 35 people show up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Sarah.
Sorry, I have another question for you.
Sure.
Kind of to follow up on that. So when did you guys originally partner with Savers within the Minnesota region? And then how did it work with you guys since you didn't have a physical region or a physical location?
Sure. So the, I'll answer the second part of the question first. The Savers stores have donation collection centers at the store. So if you go to a Savers store, there is a section of the facility that is actually dedicated towards donating charitable goods. I don't have the answer to when the partnership with DAV started. Do you guys know the answer to that approximately?
The DAV and Savers, about 2007.
And again, the reason for Green Drop, as I mentioned earlier, is as we surveyed our donors at the Savers stores, they named convenience as the number-one factor. Green Drop allows us to get the donation centers into the community, closer to them, and make it more convenient than having to drive to the Savers stores and make the donation there.
And what made you guys want to expand to Minnesota specifically?
Say again?
What made you guys want to expand to Minnesota? Was it just the convenience?
So one of the things I am responsible for as the Director of Real Estate is finding out where we need inventory for the Savers stores. So in talking to the operational team here, the business, Savers business does well in the state of Minnesota, we need to generate additional inventory via donations. I came here to start looking for potential properties, and this property was identified to me as a, as a good location. No secret, the donation centers like Green Drop that are located in suburban communities, densely populated, affluent suburban being communities, the number and the quality of the donations go up as you are more convenient to the residential community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go for it.
All right, guess I was just wondering really quick, too. How do you guys deal with noise management, or is it relatively pretty quiet when you're dealing with the donations and stuff?
It's very quiet. So we are greeting you at your car. You're generally sitting in your vehicle. You roll down the window, I'm standing, you know, a couple of feet away from you. We're having a conversation at, you know, a level, and a conversation level. You pop open the hatch or the trunk on your car or the car door. The donations typically are made in bags, paper bags, plastic bags, and boxes. We're generally moving one box or bag at a time from the automobile into the building. There's very little noise. We do not use any equipment. There are no forklifts or, you know, power, powered devices using fuel or electric or anything like that. This is a manual operation. This is a 100%. People, employees of Green Drop, moving donations from a vehicle into the building by hand.
And then kind of off of that, I'm assuming that the truck pickup time is relatively reasonable. It's not late at night or anything?
It's not going to be too early in the morning or late at night. It'll be during normal business hours. And again, you know, depending on the amount of volume, you know, for a building this size, I can envision that 16-foot box truck coming once a week, probably on-site for 20 to 30 minutes to load the truck. The employees and the truck driver who work for the company load the truck by hand. Again, there's no equipment or machinery of any kind that would be used to move the donations from the building into the truck or the vehicles into the building. It's all a manual operation.
Thank you.
Other questions this way? Commissioner Borison, you good?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you can put that mic down now.
I'll leave it there. Oh, thank you.
Okay. With that, thank you for the presentation, all the questions that were answered and the exchange. It is a public hearing, so we'll move to that part. Like the prior one, if you're tuning in remotely, please call 786-496-5601, unless you already did so. Enter conference pin 3988527 pound, and then press star 1 to get in the queue to speak. We'll let you have at least a minute to do that, and we'll turn our attention to those who are here in person. So same goes as the last one. If you're here in person and would like to testify, please come up to one of the podium, state your full name, address. When the light turns green, you've got three minutes. Amber, 30 seconds. Write your times up, and we'll let you know. So if you're here to testify, please come on up.
My name is Marsha Miller. I live at 6105 Eden Prairie Road, about a half a block from this. First of all, I'd like to know where the city got the 127 cars at the gas station. I walk by there twice a day, drove by many times. We love to watch it because he dealt with old cars and antique cars. There weren't 127 cars a day going through there. I can tell you, and I walked by it. Secondly, that gas station was there long before that whole part of town. My friends, excuse me, my friends that live there talk about when they, that was in the middle of nowhere when that gas station was first built. I'm going to try to make this fast. When they dig up that long, they, was a gas station, and then they changed oil and they did other things. Is anybody going to check the ground level of pollution before they turn that over into another business? Secondly, it's the top of the hill, and for people, and they do drive fast there, I'm sorry, I look at it all the time. And making a left turn off of Vernon into that would not be a good idea. Coming west is a different story, particularly in the afternoon, starting, used to be rush hour was four, now it's about 3:15. I, it's at the top of the hill. What else did I want to say? I'm really concerned about the land pollution from that, since it's been there for at least maybe almost 50 years, and somebody needs to look at that seriously. The 127 cars, I haven't figured out where they got that figure, working in Mr. Key's gas station, because we used to watch it all the time and walk by there. So, and I would like to say one more thing. The people that own the property now have done nothing about taking care of it. It has gone downhill over the last two years. I have photographs. The 30th of October was the beginning of about a week and a half when there was a tire laying between the fence and the street. There was a bag of garbage and a box of tools. And it stayed there until just a few days ago, when they were getting ready to come here to the Planning Commission. The neighbors all have pictures, and they were very upset about this and the way the property has been taken care of while we're waiting. Thank you.
Thank you for spending that time to come here and speak. Anyone else? No one else interested? All right. We'll turn it over to those who might be in the virtual waiting room. Do we have any?
We do not have anyone on the line, and since it's been one minute, I think it's safe to proceed.
All right. Move to close the public hearing. Anyone?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move the public hearing as closed. So we'll turn it back to the Planning Commission here to deliberate. Look to my left and right. Any comments? I'm sure there are comments, but Commissioner Miranda.
I'll start. So I think this is a perfectly fine use within the city, and as I think you mentioned, we don't have any in the city, and it would be nice to have a business like this in the city. I do think this is the wrong place for it, though, and I can, I'll have a lot of comments about that later, I suppose, after more people speak up. But I think it's, the use is okay, but I don't think it belongs in this area. It's too, I mean, there's not, there's no real node here, and I think we need more interesting businesses in this area. And being on a county road, it just seems like a poor land use. And the fact that we're being asked to both change the zoning and the comp plan just feels like a big lift for, you know, what we're doing here. So that's my high-level comments. Thanks.
All right. All right. Well, first, I mean, I'll start by saying I appreciate the presentation and, you know, that really the discussion around the appropriate land use doesn't, I wanted to reflect on the feelings of, you know, the business model of Green Drop and the veterans and stuff. Thank you for your service, and, you know, obviously, we support the intent of the business, right? But the land use piece is what we really need to discuss. I mean, I should feel, you know, pretty much very closely aligned with what Commissioner Miranda said. You know, I think this is worth a need for the city, right? We do need something like this, but I don't necessarily feel this is the appropriate location for this. You know, I tend to usually align myself with the comp plan. As this was zoned, you know, medium-density residential, I think this can be better utilized, you know, around condos, four different units, etc. I think there's a, you could fit four residential units on the site, and there's a dire need for greater use of, or more flexible use of our land for residential, multipurpose, you know... you know, that missing middle housing, right? And I think this would be a better location for that. You know, and it's, if we can't have medium-density residential, right, then it should, that this should be something that's more of a need for a larger portion of the community. A gas station, you know, an automobile service center, those are things that everybody pretty much needs on a regular, on a regular basis. This seems like we're carving out a very specific, you know, node for something that doesn't really align with something that's really going to be utilized on a very frequent basis by many people in the community. And I tend to pick up on, in this proposal, like there's some angst around the restaurant not being accepted and that this is a better proposal than the restaurant. But to me, right, just because it's better than the restaurant proposal doesn't mean that it's a good proposal. You know, I feel like we're kind of acquiescing to this request because some people didn't like that the restaurant got turned down, or saying, well, this, you know, this is a little bit more reasonable, so let's go forward with this. But I don't necessarily agree with, just the fact that it's a better idea doesn't make it a good idea. So, more to come, I guess, when other people.
Thank you for sharing. Commissioner Bornstein?
Yeah, I kind of echo everybody else's comments. First, great business. Seems like a great, successful business. Second, everybody respects veterans immensely, so nothing to do with that. I represent veterans for free for 12 years who are suffering from service-related injuries, so like, thank you for your service, and I think everybody's totally on board with, with anything that helps veterans, especially wounded veterans. From a planning perspective, you know, it's just, it doesn't make a ton of planning sense to me right now to take some of these steps. You know, just looking at the, the kind of wedge of space that, not just this wedge, but like the orange band in the comprehensive plan, that is all one category right now. It sort of seems like that should stay one category. Whether it's the right category is sort of a separate question, but it should probably all stay one category. I think the zoning should then match the comprehensive plan. You know, this wouldn't do that in that respect. You know, we talked about it being a little bit unprecedented to modify such a small parcel, and especially to do it by making it into a new comp plan category that doesn't exist. And then, you know, Director T was talking about how, well, you know, if we did do this, it would kind of be with the thinking that maybe this use would be temporary. And, you know, I, in, in thinking about whether an amendment to the comprehensive plan is reasonable, and whether like amendment to the zoning code is reasonable, ideally, you know, I think we'd be making those amendments to guide, you know, more permanent or long-term change, not temporary, kind of for now. So that's, that's kind of how I feel. I think it's great business, lots of respect for the presenters. Maybe not the strongest planning rationale for what, what they ask and the lift is.
Thank you. Other comments over here? Commissioner Felton?
I agree with everything that's been set up here. I mean, I do think it's a good business model. I would love to see one in Adana somewhere. It makes more sense maybe in the Southdale area, especially where cars can queue up a little bit more. I do as well go to that Goodwill on 36 and 100, and I'll drive up Saturday morning, and there'll be nine cars in line, and I turn around, I come back two hours later, and there's still nine cars in line, and I turn around, come back a few hours later. So I think there's, I think this community does probably kind of discard more than they should personally. And I do feel uncomfortable kind of creating a new land use category for this. But I would like to see it somewhere in Adana.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I think I'll try to see if I can get my thoughts in order, because it's jumping all around. If I were to think back, right, this is a very, very unique property. It's a county road, I believe, and it's kind of embedded to some degree in the neighborhood. We know that this was probably put there eons ago as a gas station, and then the community built up around it, you know, from some history. And of course, right, we all knew that Key's Restaurant was going into this location. There was very, very strong interest by residents to have a restaurant here, but there's also some pushback from neighborhood folks that it might cause a lot of busyness and such, and so we declined that. This option is certainly something that is less intense, right? It's not going to drive the amount of busyness as a restaurant would, and frankly, I don't have any problems with this business. I think it's a, it's a decent business. It's a low-impact business. It's a drop-off business. It's a convenient business. I think, you know, of course, we want to monitor the traffic and the safety as it comes out, as folks come in and out of that county road. But I don't have a real concern with this business. What I do have a concern with, though, is just the process. If we want to do something like a comprehensive plan amendment or zone amendment, changing this to a neighborhood service, anytime you want to make that designation, I think it would involve a lot of feedback from residents, right? And we certainly want residents to give their feedback on what options should we have in this region and in that particular PCD category, right? If you think about automotive businesses, you know, car wash, service center, et cetera, it's, it's all kind of in that class of service, right? You could think of dry cleaning. You could think of a laundry mart. You could think of something like a pet grooming service. You could even think about a UPS drop-off location, right? A UPS building could go here. Services where you come in, you do something really quickly, and you leave. There's no lingering, there's no shopping. That would be ideal in a, in a, in a spot like this. So I think this class of business as a service center drop-off fits in that class of business that would probably work. However, to zone and spot-zone this, to be specific to this kind of business, I think doesn't fit necessarily, right? We look at PCD 2, PCD 3, there's a whole ton of different service types there. PCD 4 only has automotive. We could certainly add to that list, but it would require residential input. Now, we recognized that months ago as a planning commission, and so we were working on our comprehensive plan and our work plan items, where one of them was to look at areas of change. And I still think the city council has to sign off on that for us to work on. But the Area of Change project was one that was designed to help address this exact same challenge, right? What are the little pockets in the city that is awkward that we got to do something with? And I think this falls into that category. So, being a body that really represents the residents, I, I feel we need that project on our work plan to move forward, right? Where we bring residents in to start thinking more critically about what kind of services do they want in their neighborhood. It's not a bad service, but is it the service that the residents want there, right? We know they want a restaurant, but they can't get that. But is there something else that could come here that would fit the needs of the residents that would fit in this property's size? So I would agree with Commissioner Bornstein on, I love the business and I love the mission, but I'm just thinking that the way how we get here, this might be kind of premature of just spot-zoning. Now, I was asking the question about how long would it live, right? And there's a five-year lease, right, on this property? And so it's guaranteed five years if we were to approve this, for example. What could potentially happen? You guys go in, you guys set up, it's going to operate for five years. We update the zoning for this through a comprehensive plan amendment. We add some more different business types that could work in this area. The owner decides to add five years, terminate the partnership, bring something else in that more fits the residents, right? That could potentially happen. Or we could deny it now, work on our project, find the options for this area, get the neighborhood and residents to buy in on it, they agree to it, and then we find a permanent type of a solution that would last for much longer. I'm kind of leaning towards the latter solution, because it really involves the residents. And so even though I really like this business, I think it's a good business model for this area, I'm just a little bit concerned that residents and the needs for this area was not really considered, and it, and there might be something else that folks would digest better in this, in this zone. So that's kind of my thoughts on it, and I'm really open to hear what other folks have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner who?
I'd like to connect back to Commissioner Felton's words. I mean, I personally don't have a background in planning or land use or anything, but I'd like to say that, I mean, I feel like Adana really needs a donation center in our community, because obviously the Goodwells are really far away. I think the closest one that I go to, or my family goes to, is in Richfield/Bloomington, and like when we get there, there's a long line of cars, which then, okay, if we have to wait an hour to donate our stuff, we might as well just go home and throw it away. And I feel like donating is really important to encourage sustainability, and especially for our environment with this day, within the day that we are in. So I feel like this is very, this is a new idea that's being brought into our community that I feel like needs to be brought up more, and, I mean, compared to a restaurant, I feel like a donation center would be better. But, I mean, again, I don't have a background in planning or anything, so I can't speak on like the technical stuff.
Thank you. You have any comments? Okay. So I'll share a couple things. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's unanimous. We all agree that something like this ought to be in the city, and we support your mission. I guess I'm, I'm a little on the fence here. No offense to what you do, but the long-term outcome for the site, this, what you're doing is not it to me. But I think I'm a little more amenable in the meantime, and that's based off of signals from the community, from prior conversations of a more intense use here that I personally would support more than this. I think what we all have to remind ourselves is, by right, what the PCD 4 allows for here is a service center could go back in. Loud noises, lots of traffic, a gas station, a car wash, by right. There's no rezoning, there's no comprehensive plan amendment, because they won't need to, because that's how it's, correct? Or would you need?
We do need to rectify the comprehensive plan, not sticking with.
So regardless. So regardless of, you know, Quincy, what you mentioned of what could go here, I mean, there is going to be some rectifying, no matter what you would want to do here. This seems to fit into what is there and what's kind of always been there in sort of this light service type of view. So I, I kind of commend staff for getting creative and coming up with a new comprehensive plan amendment to help rectify that at the same time. Now, is this the long-term outcome I see here? Absolutely not. I, again, I, I wish more things were allowed by right in our communities for little neighborhood nodes, but I think we all know what was proposed previously was a bit too intense for the site. I think everyone liked something that people could go and gather at. And if not, you know, multifamily or medium residential makes sense, and that's what it's guided for in the comprehensive plan. You'd have to rezone it anyways to do that. You'd have to get a comprehensive plan amendment to do anything else. So you're pretty much stuck with having to do something pretty major here, meaning we have quite a bit of discretion. So I kind of just sympathize a little with the property owner. As we figure things out, why not let them do this? Because it does serve a need and puts the site to use instead of letting it sit vacant and provide a, you know, it's, it's an eyesight, you know, or eyesore right now. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm kind of on the fence, and I was coming into this, because this isn't the long-term outcome, but we've seen things like this happen before where someone does something because there isn't support now, and they sit on a site waiting for that support to come. I don't think this is the perfect use, but I think it's better than it sitting vacant. So that's just where I'm at, and I seem to be in the minority, so that's okay. But maybe if that just spurs conversations, I think no matter what happens here, you have to do something pretty big, comprehensive plan or zoning.
I mean, you think maybe it's not being put to use because it's not zoned consistent with the comprehensive plan? It's not, if it were zoned differently, maybe someone would build a different type of residential option there, or if the comp plan were revised to allow for maybe something more intense, you know, maybe along that whole band, maybe, maybe there would be more interest, but.
I totally agree.
I agree, like a gas station could go in or whatever, and that would be fine right now, I guess.
Well, I totally agree. It's just, three years ago, when that site was in operation, there would be no need to rezone it.
Yeah.
You know, so it really does take for, at that moment when something changes, that's kind of the point that we need to rezone it. So is this the right use? I think in the interim, whatever we do has a potential to change for something better. We could rezone it right now to, but that's not what's proposed. So do we just reject this, and then we work to go through a long process to rezone this to the medium-density residential, to get in line with the comprehensive plan, and then wait for that to come?
Does, does kind of this industrial feel like, like gas station type of use really feel right for this? So it's zoned that way now. I mean, but does that feel right for this, for this? I don't, I just.
For me, long-term, absolutely not. But that's my personal discretion.
I don't know. Yeah. Anyway, I get where you're coming from. It's an interesting kind of quandary, when there's this tension behind how these.
Commissioner Day, I know you got something to say?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know that I like the idea of going through the motions of the comp plan amendment and change, creation of a new zone for the comp plan, changing existing zoning code just for, to avoid a vacant lot, right? So these hoops should be jumped through for a desired long-term outcome for the community, like you said. This doesn't fit that description. This business could, this could go out of business in two, could go out of business in two years, and then it's going to sit there vacant again, and it'll be all for now anyway. We don't know that this will be succeed. I think we need to be deliberate, right? I don't like short-term stopgaps just because, again, the previous idea was bad, where you don't want to see the cycle vacant, you know, et cetera. If we need to invest greater time in rezoning, then we need to do that. And, you know, temporary blight, I think, is better than setting a precedent of short-term, you know, all these, again, hoops that we're jumping through to, to avoid an undesirable outcome for, for the short term. So, yeah, I mean, again, I'll reiterate, it's, it's, you know, we should be jumping through these hoops and making these changes for what we desire to see in the long term, because we only have limited time on, on all these different areas. I don't want to have to revisit this in two years, right, when there's other things that deserve our attention and priority, bigger nodes and stuff like that, so.
Carrie, could you speak to, I mean, and again, this is an anomaly to have that disconnect, right? So, I mean, this type of situation we're facing isn't something we normally would ever face, where you have such a disconnect between the zoning and the comprehensive plan amendment. So I'm not as concerned about a precedent when there really isn't many situations like this in the city at all.
That's, that's right. For this one, should this fail, I think the next step is to go back and rezone the site to match the zoning to the west. They could use the site as an auto repair as it exists today, or sell to a medium-density developer that could put four units on the site. That said, variances are still going to be likely, because it's very small in size. I gave this comparison last time when the restaurant was considered, and we talked about getting four units on the site. As a comparison, the Valley View and Wooddale site. As a comparison, the Valley View and Wooddale site where they're building the four-unit, the two duplexes essentially, the row homes, that site is 11,000 square feet in size. This is 16, so it is a little bit larger, but in all likelihood, given their street frontages on two of the three sides, likely going to need some variances, but again, they would go through that process similar to the Valley View/Wooddale. So I guess to sum up, I think the next step should this fail is we should rezone the site to PRD3.
Can I, as, as you guys were talking about taking the time to kind of look at it long-term, it made me kind of question, why not a five-year pop-up until something is done? I, I guess I, the applicant reached out to 192 residents, 35 showed up to the meeting. We've gotten kind of 50/50 on the feedback on Better Together. Would you...
I would say more were opposed than four.
Okay.
That commented on Better Together.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, just putting your shoes in the proper, your feet in the shoes of the property owner, right? I think the trouble was what was proposed previously got such negative feedback, more than positive, got unanimously shut down by the Planning Commission and the City Council. But it was more for, it was too intense. So like rezoning this to medium-density residential, I personally, discretion at the table, like I'd rather see a nice neighborhood, little cafe or restaurant there instead of that because it provides a little more interest, right? So that's where, this is a unique opportunity to just have a stopgap measure until something's going to change anyways. It's not Senate President because we don't have a situation like this in other places. And if it's to rezone it to medium-density residential, I, I don't necessarily support that. Would it make sense there, more than what we're seeing? Yes. But I think we have a unique opportunity to take advantage of something that's been there since 169 ran by, you know? It's a unique little spot that got built around, so I'd rather not lose an opportunity for the community to gather. I don't know, I just don't see that...
This is a community gathering spot in the same vein that a restaurant is. People would stop by with their cars for a couple of minutes and drop something off. This is not a community node or a community...
No, oh yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with you there.
And I think we need to stop with the assumption that this would exist for five years, right? It could go out of business in six months if there's not enough interest from the community. Right? I mean, just saying that we're providing an interesting stopgap, I don't buy into that.
Savers has been around for 40 years and...
So, that doesn't bear any, that doesn't add any value to what I just said about this location and this specific business model. That's just, that's very different. In that location, for things less than 50 pounds...
I think the business model has been around for a long time, too.
And for the convenience and stuff like that, it doesn't mean, I mean...
I think there's a lot of value in this business model. I mean, they do kind of take goods and resell them.
I, I'm not disagreeing with the business model. I'm just saying that we can't assume that it's going to be there for five years as a stopgap while we're debating future land, long-term use of this location.
I guess, and, and, and I'm not going to debate you on that. What I'm saying is if we approve this and they do it, something will be there besides nothing, which is if we reject this. Nothing's going to be there for a little longer. And so I'm, I'm in support of letting something be there that I don't want to see there long-term because I know we're going to have to change something there eventually. And the, the community had like resounding negative feedback toward anything more intense than this. So it's, it's either this or like medium-density residential until people kind of change their minds maybe, I don't know. We're in an unusual predicament here.
Yep, and you do have the 20, that's going to come up sooner than, than we realized, the 2028 update to the entire plan, so that's another opportunity to, to take a look at this area.
Because in reality, it won't get added to our work plan till like the following year, so we won't probably change the zoning on this for a year or two. And then there, yeah. Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, so I guess a little bit of history. Carrie mentioned in passing that this wasn't a unanimous vote the first time it came to the Planning Commission, and I prominently actually thought the restaurant was a great idea. My concern though, I think I voted against it because the, I thought a single-story building with a surface parking lot is not anything that should be built in a Dyna anymore. We had, what, the hottest year on the planet since records have been kept. We had the hottest Labor Day ever in Minnesota, hazy orange skies, two summers in a row due to Canadian forest burning. We have a huge problem on our hand, and to continue to build or even, you know, redevelop parcels like this, a single-story buildings with surface parking is just not the solution to any, any problem that the, the community, the city, or the world is facing right now. If we're going to change the comp plan and, and the zoning ordinance, I think, you know, we should, as, as Carrie mentioned, I think we should either zone it multifamily to match the, the comp plan, or maybe, you know, mixed use or something which would be similar to multifamily but with a one business on the first floor or something. So going into a little more detail what I started out with, so this is a county road, one of the very few streets in a Dyna, or roads actually, in a Dyna that goes through, you know, large sections of the city. I mean, it goes from the west side of a Dyna all the way into Minneapolis as it becomes 50th Street, and we don't have a lot of those. And so we need to have, you know, mixed use and density in this area. We don't need a 10-story building here. We don't need a five-story building here, but the, there are plenty of four-story buildings, residential buildings in the area. I'm not saying you want to build that on a triangular lot, but we can do much better than what we have here. So I think, you know, a county road is a place where we can do something. The second thing is that, you know, a point I like to make is that we have, you know, so much of a Dyna is zoned single-family, right? And I think it's pretty clear that people want to keep that, keep it that way, right? So we have very few areas that are not single-family. So what do we do with those? How do we leverage, you know, our concerns about the future of our children, about climate change? How do we address that without touching the single-family zoning areas? Because you don't want to do anything there. So we have to do something in the areas that are not single-family zoning, and this is not a single-family zoning area, and the area around it is not a single-family zoning. So we need to do something more intensive here, and I think this is the place to do it because we have so few places. I mean, the argument I had about in a similar triangular awkward lot at, in Grandview with the coffee shop was that it's just the wrong use. It's a very prominent location, and it's sort of a gateway, and this is the same thing where you're coming down Vernon, and it's a triangular lot, so it's got a very long exposure on one side. And, you know, having some, you know, just kind of very drab place here that doesn't do anything for the community, there's no place, you know, no one's going to walk here, you know, on a regular basis. I mean, you might occasionally to drop stuff off, but we need like a community space here. Maybe the art center, I don't know. But we need something here that is going to be a benefit to the neighborhood, and I, and I just don't think, this kind of business and building makes sense in a larger area. It doesn't even have to be Southdale, but someplace, you know, you know, even in Grandview, you know, mid-block where you're not prominent, you're just kind of in the, in the, you know, in the commercial district or whatever. Having this on a corner or a triangular lot just, just doesn't really make sense. It's not the kind of building you want, you want there. So, I mean, this, this would basically create, other than occasional cars coming through, this would basically create a dead zone in the neighborhood, and it would not be something, it would be like, oh, where do you live? Oh, I live by that, you know, whatever nondescript thing. I just, I just don't think it's a great, great way to anchor a neighborhood, you know? I think this could be a great neighborhood. It is a great neighborhood. I think it would be a better neighborhood. And then, you know, the whole spot zoning thing, you know, it's something, I mean, I agree that our zoning needs to change and everything, but doing it, you know, one parcel at a time, I just think is just completely wrong. It's, even if it's, you know, in Grandview was proposed doing that, you know, for increased density, which I'm generally for, but I thought that was a bad idea because you just don't want a spot zone. So I do think we should rezone it as soon as we can to make sure that a gas station or car wash, whatever, doesn't go in there because I really don't think the neighbors want that. And if we, if we think back to that meeting, the, the Planning Commission meeting where this was proposed, it was interesting, if you recall, that the developers initially sent out a survey or something to, like all of a Dyna to say, you know, would you like a restaurant in this area? And, you know, overwhelmingly it was yes. But then when you ask the people in the neighborhood, you know, do you want it next to your house? Well, of course, nobody wants it next to their house, right? But, so people actually want a restaurant here, right? And, you know, the, the, obviously the immediate neighbors want it less so, but I think it's something that the city wants, and I think we need more activity on the west side of a Dyna, and I think this is the ideal place for it. So I think we need to rezone this so that it, it doesn't become a gas station or, or even an EV station, EV charging station. I think that would be a mistake, too. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hu.
Just a quick question for you, Commissioner Miranda. What are your thoughts on having Green Drop as like a short-term, five-year occupant of this space?
So my experience with, and this happened from the very first year I was on this commission, is that short-term things just generally become long-term things because of inertia. And, because, you know, in my neighborhood, we had a, a bank that they allowed, you know, we weren't supposed to have parking in front of it, but it was, it was an exception, so they allowed parking in front of it. And then the building, you know, either next door, two stories down, you know, next door, redeveloped, and they said, well, because the building next door is parking in front, we should have parking in front here. And so it became a precedent, right? And so I feel like if we do something like that, it creates the idea that this was meant to be here. I mean, kind of like the, the gas station or the, you know, car place was, is sort of a precedent now, right? And we're trying to get away from that. It's hard, once you make a decision to go down a certain route, it just becomes very hard to change that. And I feel like if we do this as a temporary measure, it's just going to become the status quo. That's my concern. Thank you.
And then kind of going off a similar line, they have that five-year option, too, after that. So even if we're trying to switch it to have more multifamily, we lose that control over 10 years if we're just looking at it for five years.
Any other discussion points?
So, so a question, so like when we, so we can approve or deny things, we can also like offer changes or whatever, but we can't specify a completely different zoning.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Just to clarify. So that has to be a future thing.
Yeah, it's a proposal, I know.
Yeah.
Anyone have a motion?
I move to deny.
Second.
Do a roll call vote?
Subject to the findings in, in the staff report? Yes.
Commissioner Felth?
Aye.
Commissioner?
So aye is deny.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, okay.
You lose the motion.
Usually announce that, yeah, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yes, okay.
If we say aye, we are denying the motion.
Aye means you're denying it.
So aye.
Commissioner Miranda? Aye. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Bornstein?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. So, sorry, the, the motion results in the denial of the proposal, so that'll go to the City Council for their consideration. Best of luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along. So we got two sketch plan reviews. Depending on how fast this one goes, maybe we'll offer up a break after the next one, after this one. So we have the 4,677 Street West sketch plan review. Carrie, take it away.
Oh, did I skip that? Yeah, sorry, the, we're talking about the library, 7,001 York Avenue.
Thank you, yeah, there we go. Thank you, Chair members of the commission. So we're looking at the Southdale Library site in the Southdale District on the intersection of 70th and York. Note that it has a unique zoning here, so it's in the commercial district of Southdale, guided in the comprehensive plan as one of our more intense districts, but it's always been zoned R1. Goes back to when the, well, any of the maps that we've seen at City Hall, the zoning's been R1. The building was built in the early 70s. Libraries are a conditionally permitted use within that zoning district, district, so the, really, the zoning with that type of use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Those types of uses allowed in that area. It's, again, you can see here, Guided Community Activity Center, so it was anticipated as being one of our more intense, potential for intense development on the site. Sorry for the picture with snow, this is what came up on Google Maps, but our future soon. The next one, not quite as bad, this is taken from the 70th, 70th street side, so you can see a large parking lot with the building as it exists today. So the proposal is to tear down the existing library and the service center and everything that was attached to that building now, and build a roughly, oh, 45,000 square foot library. And within the building, the Edina Art Center potentially could be a tenant, about a 20,000 square foot within that space. So not a lot of detail with the proposed plans. The south of the library would be open space, green space with connections through it. So this wasn't included in your packet, but it shows the site and some of the trails and bikeways in the, in the area. So you can see the Southdale Library site located right here, the regional trail coming through to the south, this Adams Hill Park, there is a little strip of land that's owned by the city. We're seeing as part of this, a connection being made up to this site that could connect those facilities to the south. So that south half would be utilized for open space, potentially programming for the art center, should that go in, and then those pedestrian and bike connections through the site. So again, not a lot of detail to show at this point, but that's the idea. There would be a surface parking lot along 70th and underground parking as well. This is, would be, so what would be required with this? Would be a site plan review and a revised conditional use permit for the uses. Potentially, because the site is zoned R1, there's a 40-foot height requirement on the site, and they're looking at about a 50-foot tall building, so variance there. And potentially for parking stalls, they're real close, they're still working out the programming and the, the square footage of the building, so they're anticipating no variance there, they would be code compliant, but likely for the height. Otherwise, everything else would be code compliant. So obviously with any formal application, much more detail would be required with the building renderings, more detail on the connections and how those would be graded on the site to the south. We do have that 20-foot height requirement on the first floor, and then the natural materials to be built or installed on, the building material on the first 60 feet of the building. There would be a parking and traffic study would be needed as part of any formal application. They do intend to meet the city's sustainability policy. Some of the things that we would want looked at is the, looking at the design experience guidelines, specifically the street room topologies along York and the north side of... of the site. So I will stop there, answer any questions that you may have, and the Hennepin County staff team is here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions? Anyone, everyone?
Yeah, who drew the picture? It's good. Is that you, Carrie, or somebody else?
No, this came from the, the county just today.
Okay.
Just sort of a pedantic question. So the library was allowed an R1, but there was a large, I guess that would be a government building, so that's allowed, too. Okay. Gotcha.
Any other questions for Carrie? No? Yes, welcome. The applicant team come up and either provide a quick presentation or answer questions? I know it's getting late.
Good evening, commissioners. Matthew Kuntrod with MSR Design, principal design architect, and I thank you for the opportunity tonight to ask questions. We are early in the process and looking for guidance along with the community. So we've had a lot of engagement. We've looked at all the planning documents and everything, and we're embedding that in it. I'd like to note that for the most part, we've built this off of the Hennepin County Climate Action Plan and the high aspirations for how to develop communities. Our firm works across the nation on public libraries, and we know their importance for connecting communities, not only being neighborhood partners, but also building strong and healthy communities as a whole. So building on that conversation, what's embedded in what you see today is very high aspirations for sustainability, a reparative of the site. You can see from that diagram that it's intended to connect broadly to the creek system as well as all of the development that's going on currently. It will be lower density than some of the neighbors that are being placed inside of it with the housing and that, but it builds on how to connect to that and become a cultural hub for the community as a whole. It'll be an asset. So you'll see embedded in the, some of the documents you have that the parking is mainly below grade, we're minimizing the above-grade parking. The above grade will be for convenience and allow for ease of access to the site for all the complexities that happen with dropping off books or dropping off people to come visit. But the main idea is porosity through the connections to the parks, pedestrians, bikes, and then making connectivity an important part of it. So with that as an overview, I can answer more detailed questions based on where we're at or let you ask whatever you might need in the meantime.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
So before, this is like their third iteration of what the county has done. So back in the day, pre-COVID, I, I participated in several of the workshops the county had. And this is like completely different from anything that was, that was proposing, a lot of housing on the site and either apartments or condos, and then they had, I don't know, just a lot of housing on the site. And this just seems very different, and I'm wondering why.
Yes, I can let the county speak to some of this, but more importantly, the, there is a tremendous amount of need to manage water. The site currently manages the 100-year flood. If you look at some of the flood plans, the majority of the south of the site manages the overflow from flood. What we're working on is a reparative approach, which would be a landscape more akin to what Minnesota is. So it's familiar, it's educational, it helps the whole area in its health from managing it, as you mentioned earlier. We're facing major challenges with intense storms. The changes in climate have impacted it, and this will, has been planned to really absorb some of that and also make it part of the educational process that's happening within the facility that's going to be there for tens of decades.
But the Southdale Design Guidelines talk about managing water in a more active way. And this, it feels like, I mean, were the Southdale Design Guidelines considered in the production of this?
Yes, yes. You mean active in the process of the landscape?
Well, in terms of people using it, you know, rather just being a lake or a pond or whatever, it's something that people can, you know, walk along and splash in and just, you know, it becomes a regional destination in itself, even if the library weren't there.
Right. Our current strategy is to mitigate and make it participatory in a way, but the park is not, or the open space is not planned yet to be highly programmed as a part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Other commissioners? Quincy got it.
Thanks again for your presentation here and just talking to this. Just share a little bit about the community process that you guys went through. What does that look like in terms of getting feedback? What, what information did you share with them? What was some of the feedback that you received from it?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Ercol. I work for Hennepin County. I'm the project manager. I'm in design and construction, so I can share a little bit insight as what was noted. We've been in various different community engagements throughout the whole journey of this project. And so as we've gone that, we've tracked that very diligently in recording a lot of key components that we've continued to bring forward, such as access and some of those moments of the library that is cherished currently, and then some of those improvements, which is one of those is currently being a three-story facility. So moving along with that, we've conducted, now that we've transitioned in this new plan, we've engaged the community one time since then, and that was about two months ago now. And that was at the end of pre-design. And so again, engaging in our early design aspirations for this project. It was also the introduction of our future potential tenant, the Edina Art Center. So it's really getting some momentum in those conversations because those two programs, we feel are great partnership, and we're really trying to get the community excited for that because we are really thrilled to have that opportunity to engage that because I think there's synergies there that we're working on, and we're eager to get further into design to see how that actually unfolds. Next plan is actually to engage here at the end of SD, which is after the new year, with some more further development than what you see here today, really in the primarily of the engaging of the programs, shared spaces, this engagement, so that, referring to that outdoor space. It's really important for us on that education piece, not only for the library, but even our Edina Art Center has shared that program pieces in education. They have a lot of summer programs that they'd like to expand because of that, including some of their programs that they don't longer have, which is their kiln, their ceramic and pottery. We're seeing that as an outdoor space that we can accommodate due to the size of the site.
And, you know, from a design perspective, to that's the community engagement, and I think you will have absolutely some more engagement for the community and as your plans get more solidified. Just talk a little bit about the climate action components. I know, I, I think in some of the, the designs, there were solar panels on the roof. I'm guessing it might be a, and I'm guessing it might be a LEED-certified building, maybe? You certainly have the water features outside, but if you would like to tick off the list of thoughts that you had on sustainability?
I'll start, and then I encourage Matthew to join in. We are not doing LEED, however, we are doing B3, which is the Minnesota program that we, the Climate Action Plan for Hennepin County is aligned with through our aspirations that are noted in that, and then also what that guideline provides us, and then, then some if we are able to do that through our certain initiatives. So correct, we are looking at PV, we are looking at very aggressive stormwater management that's already been noted. We're looking at potential green roof and how it complements with some of our program space. We're looking at geothermal, we have a few different options for that. And then just really being a more mindful of the systems that we're choosing to be as close to that energy efficiency as we can with, with the program requirements for both the library and the art center. EV, I'm not sure if there's more that you would add?
Yeah, I can add a little bit that's embedded in the sketch plan that isn't fully evident as you look at it, but we're orienting south and tuning the building so that it drives down energy intensity use. So we're going to meet benchmarks and surpass them by nearly 80% just by the orientation and our mechanical systems. Short story being that we will use considerably less energy than a baseline building of a similar type. On top of that, well daylight, so because of the orientation and the floor-tofloors that we're looking at will have good daylight autonomy, meaning that almost every space would be daylight and driving down energy costs from the use of electrified light. We will be looking at and striving towards net zero energy with the use of photovoltaics to supplement that lower consumption. And then also building in opportunities for water retention and slowing down of water so that it is not inundating the drainage systems of the city and infrastructure as well. We look at healthy materials, specifically eliminating red-listed toxins from any material uses so that off-gassing isn't dangerous to the occupants of the buildings. Air quality as well inside of the building to ensure that healthy air is part of it. These libraries often become areas of safety during times of stress, so making it an open, accessible place as part of the community in that sustainability piece of being the good neighbor and ability to take care in times of stress. So longevity, libraries need to be investments that are for decades. So by its nature, the quality of materials and the assembly needs to extend and last a long time without heavy maintenance and continual renewal. So that's built into our planning. And we've got a whole checklist of tentative measures that range from community engagement and health to energy and water, all along with the Climate Action Plan to support that. So really looking forward to what could be a model for the state or the nation in terms of how to be, address community needs long-term.
If I may, I'd add even on the exterior note, the material choices that we're using, both in terms of our infrastructure, you know, reducing our pavement, looking at pavers, native plantings, so being very mindful of even on the outside for our selections as well.
You know, just to touch on one quick question. So I certainly like bold design, and I know when the Minneapolis Library was built, you know how it just juts out over the, the street, and it, you know, it looks really fascinating. And then the fenestration on, on the south side is, you know, a lot of glass from all the way from the bottom to the top. Are you envisioning glass all the way, too? And I know this is like a box design, but would you be thinking of any kind of more architectural, interesting, bold designs as, as part of this?
Yes, I think that in particular, this will be well-suited for the neighborhood and the commercial area. So if you read a little bit into this plan, we've pushed more towards York and to hold the corner of 70th and York, acknowledging the scale there, and then developing a more appropriate scale towards the neighborhood. As we know, libraries serve the whole community. There'll be people driving here, but there's a whole asset in the Richfield community. It's all walkable and very easy scale, and so all of that wants to come together. At the same time, this is a great open, opportunity for a great open outdoor space as well inside of an area that's densifying. So as a central space for people to come to, both through, as I mentioned earlier, through bicycle or pedestrian or car, to be able to work through the park, but feel like they're just naturally welcomed into the library as a key piece of what you're talking about in terms of that experience. So not necessarily an object, but a great place to come to as well.
And last question. So I think it makes a lot of sense. I know York Avenue is a fairly busy street. Richfield is right next door. I guess I'll cut to it, but it feels like a Richfield Library where they could access it way easier than Edina residents. Just what are some of your thoughts on how folks would access the library from the west side of the city, you know, just crossing over York and getting back and forth? You know, I'm in a stroller with my kids, and I'm coming to the library. How do you envision those cross-sections?
Yeah, I, I think that the York sidewalk and area of access is critically important as well. There's two different scales we're working at on both sides. We've looked at, you know, all kinds of varieties of mid-crossing or access along York vehicular, and we've decided the best route is to really keep it towards that main intersection and then try to keep it very calm in the midsection, but leveraging the existing crossings that connect into the, what's already developed and continuing to develop as the pedestrian ways along all of the streetscapes. So building on the plan that's in place in the recommendations. Thank you.
Commissioner Felton?
You had mentioned this is facing south. It looks very much like to me that it has four front facades because it's in the middle of a park. And I didn't notice that the parking lot has changed to all underground rather than having parking what may be on the backside.
Carrie Coese, switch to the plan.
Yeah, there's another plan that, there is a percentage of the parking that's on the north side, and this is really developed in a way for convenience and safety. So being able to tie into the park system on the south, again, to your point, that this is a five-sided building in many ways. The roof is just as important as well as all the facades. So giving some buffer on the east, trying to minimize the amount of good, safe parking on the north that collects right into 70th in an efficient way. A lot will be happening in that area. There'll be drop-off on the north, drop-off for people that are maybe parking later, dropping someone off or picking someone up. There'll be book drop on that side as well as a main entry as well. So developing what we feel is appropriate amount of surface easy parking. Libraries require at some point, some want to come in really quickly, get their book holds or their new materials quickly and right out the door. And then below grade, the majority of the parking is for longer stay. We think in the end, with the potential partnership with Edina Art Center, the library, the park, trailhead with Nine Mile Creek, that this is going to be a long stay, spend your day, interact and be for a while. And that's why we've kind of looked towards that inconvenience split of north and below grade.
And I'm really thrilled about the art center. It's a 40-year lease, right?
Right now, we're doing a letter of intent negotiation, so the details have not been confirmed yet.
Okay. But I am really thrilled about the art center being here, and one of the reasons is accessibility. The prior art center was you had to drive to it, it was difficult to access. And so I see this not only being accessed by car, but by bicycles as well off the Nine Mile Creek and by walkways, and also by the bus, because there's a six bus that goes right down France Avenue, and it's my favorite bus in the entire Twin Cities because I can get anywhere on it. And one of the reasons why I was so excited about the Southdale area is because it makes that art center, not only the library, but the Edina Art Arts Center, very accessible to a lot of people. So, I can imagine people coming here, taking an art class. I can imagine families kind of coming on their strollers from Richfield because it's a Hennepin County Library. It's not an Edina Library. It's a Hennepin County Library. So, from Richfield with their strollers across the street, maybe checking out the art class on art class, and then going to Storytime. But I gotta say, when I see this plan, that parking on the north side feels too close to 70th Street and feels like that's the backside of the building. And, I don't necessarily see any backside of the building. So, I want you to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, definitely. What you're describing is a library in the park, right?
Yeah.
And I would affirm that our idea here really is that it needs to be a library of the landscape and part of that. So, again, not a lot of detail here, but hearing your comments, I think it's built into exactly where we're headed and what we intend to achieve. With any parking on grade, it starts to create boundaries. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, some sensitivity to the relationship with the parking and the street, and then what the building, how the building gestures towards a welcoming nature is critically important.
Yeah. And echoing my comments earlier about the Galleria Project, bringing those sidewalks in from the street, so there's landscaping, so when people are walking or riding their bikes and having the ability, because there's so much room here, you know, can it be a bike pathway and can it be a pedestrian pathway? And can they be generous? And can they be generously spaced from the street?
Yeah, definitely have enough room and enough opportunities to provide for all of them. As I mentioned earlier, we are really keyed in to multi modes of access. So, you know, whether it's bus, pedestrian, or walkway, we know that there's intensifying use in the area because of the recent developments. And then currently, if you look at the existing Southdale Library, the approach from the east is not welcoming and easy. And we understand that that needs to be fully corrected in this and make it more pedestrian-oriented because you have the asset of the whole community on that side. And then building off of, you know, already what's developing with connectivity that's happening to the west, specifically making safe connections to the crossings at the intersections, so that connection across the site works, both pedestrian, vehicular, and through bike traffic as well.
Yeah. And then there's 70th Street, there's like 71st Street, there is a residential street coming into it on that one side.
It dead-ends at the end. There's development, and so the property doesn't, it won't be able to travel through, but there is crossings and walkways that will need to tie in.
Okay. And can you tell me a little bit about the, so the Art Center is about 20,000 square feet, and do I have that right? 19,000 square feet, and the rest is the library? So, it's not, and you've got like two levels, and you're trying to write in then the whole entry, and how do you find one versus the other?
Yeah, the intent is a seamless set of experiences that really connect people to what's going on in the community as well as the services that the library provides as core. So, currently looking at some type of atrium space that connects the two, makes it very seamless, but also deals with all the separations and different operational hours that are needed. So, that's why we're continuing to work towards next set of meetings.
Okay. And then that, I mean, the Art Center needs north lighting, or prefer north lighting, not necessarily, right? So, you've got the library that might want one, and...
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah. And I appreciate the minimize, sorry, minimizing the south and west.
Welcome to the party!
I'm sure you've got lots of players involved in this, and it's, which is why we have kind of a sketchy plan. And let me go through, but I think that's about it. And I think the atrium, right, and how you split those two unequal kind of spaces would be important. And right, and right now, I think it's primarily just the plan that the parking just seems too close to the street and too close to the building. I'm sure when it gets developed, that'll be a little bit more graceful transition. Okay.
Any other questions? Maybe four comments, any other questions? No. I'll let you go with the comment. Yeah.
I guess a question, comment. Was any thought, so I like the proposal, the landscape design for outdoor learning around the green space and the body of water, right? And I just was thinking, as, you know, Commissioner Miranda talked about active use, and how do we make it like a destination? I think it'd be nice to have within the boundaries of what you can do on this site, even if you had a path going around circling that body of water, and then connecting through, you know, and stuff like that, the most part. So, I'm a runner. If you put a loop around a body of water, I'll probably run around it, and most people will walk around it. So, that's, you know, the residents that live close by, right, to just go for a simple short walk with their dog or with their kids, just to make a little loop or something around there, I think would be a great benefit rather than, and would make it more inviting for people to come onto the space. So, I'm sure that probably considered, but just a general comment.
Excellent, you know, and bring your library card too. Run through the library.
Got a quick question. Commissioner Miranda brought it up. There's been multiple iterations of this design. Most recently, after the one he mentioned, it was a potential incorporation into Southdale Center. Can you explain what happened there and why that didn't proceed, and why you reverted back to here in this type of very different scenario?
I'm not privy of all the conversations, but probably one simple word, COVID, and just the conversations with Simon Properties, just change of interest. And I'm sure, again, I'm not entirely involved in all those conversations, but this was in the best interest to keep our project moving forward with that disconnect with that partner.
Okay. And I guess kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Miranda's question, because I don't know if there was a good answer yet, at least for me, but, you know, we expect most applicants to, you know, start with the Design Experience Guidelines and the Southdale Guiding Principles. And there's some kind of basic fundamental things that look ignored here, and they were incorporated into previous iterations. So, and maybe that's a good thing as it's potentially an oasis here, but I also feel like we're squandering eight acres of land in a very busy area and trying to fit a very suburban kind of, something very different. Maybe there's benefits there, but, you know, at least the residents who created that plan that speak for this area, you know, they're pretty adamant about starting with certain design experiences, street room typologies, and this pretty much ignores it entirely. So, I'm just interested in why we're looking at this versus something that conforms to that a little differently.
Yeah, I think if, if we look at the overall guidelines, again, this is an early drawing of many conversations that are going on and things that are half-baked. You know, there's an earlier rendering at one of the conversations earlier that was a box. And we could show you a box and have similar conversations. So, what we're trying to do is ensure that we're addressing these, hear you, your conversations tonight, and make sure that we're tracking. I do know that the majority of the guidelines are embedded in what we're doing, and we're continuing to listen and build in those aspects. Our key piece here is trying to ensure that, especially on the north side, northwest corner, we're holding the corner. We're trying to build that room that isn't a room on that side. You know, there's a large parking lot across the street, so we're holding the edge right at the boundary. We don't have a very large building inside of the site, so holding what we think is the most important corner. And then, again, to the conversation earlier, we feel really important that libraries be part of the neighborhood as well. And so, the scale to the east is what we're trying to address. We're trying to do both. We're trying to create that edge and corner at the northwest, and then address a welcoming set of experiences coming from the east. So, understanding it's abstract right now, and I'm describing a line drawing, I hear you, and we will continue to bring information forward that will make it more clear as to how we're addressing the guidelines.
Were you able to read Mick Johnson's or AFO's review of...
Yes, yes, I do. And I read a lot into that. You know, you don't see any of the pathways, or there's conversation about running around the site. And there will be ample opportunities to walk for days on the site, I can tell you that. They're just not in the sketch right now. We want to continue to develop the site from a water management standpoint, but still overlaying everything that's in those guidelines in terms of the pedestrian, bicycle access. And then using the form that we have in limited amount, if you look at the sketch, you know, the footprint isn't that large on the overall site. So, to create a room, we have to be very strategic and leverage every little bit of piece we have. So, that's what we're trying to do with the overall layout right now.
Okay, yeah, I have a number of comments related to that later, but I think that's it for questions.
I have one more.
Sure. Commissioner Feld.
Because it's Hennepin County Library, have you talked to Richfield as well about the connection with the neighborhood?
We've actually had quite a few participants in our community engagement from Richfield as well.
And what are the, some of the things they're talking about?
Based on the community engagement meeting, and then we also have an open survey that we've conducted to, a lot resonates with the accessibility piece, and also just being a good neighbor and respectful to that area, both, I think, in terms of our design, but then also more importantly, obviously during construction, which we are well aware of and stand hold that that will be our direction, so.
Have they talked about the height of the, I mean, I don't see 50 feet being that tall. They are one, one and a half story buildings over there, but have they talked about that?
They have not. And I think, understanding the why, so being that we are putting into programs, and we want to be respectful of our footprint, I think there's more tolerance to that, knowing what we're trying to achieve and not overdoing it just to make a statement, that there is some function to that height too. But initial conversations hasn't resulted in any comments such as height.
Student commissioners, you got any questions?
No questions.
Maybe we'll just go around, because the sketch plan, we've been asking mostly questions, but we want to leave you with some comments, some other feedback. I think you can gain that from what we've discussed, but I don't know if you, all right, we'll start over. Commissioner Bornstein?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to having a nice amount of natural space, water management. I just think it's easy, you'll get better feedback from us if there's like a little bit more visually to react to, and you guys know that. So, I don't have a ton of, I think, I think I'm going to say the same thing as everybody else, so I'll try to just keep it kind of short. Have you looked at the, any of the work that has happened in Weber Park here in Edina recently? It was another kind of water, stormwater management project where...
We have, and we actually were working with Perry and did some site tours, yeah.
All right. Well, I mean, it's not the most, the most elaborate thing, but there is, you know, some thoughtful attention given to being able to walk through a water management type of space. And even though it just got planted, and, you know, it's going to take a couple of years to kind of look like something, people are already using it, even though it's sort of a natural space. So, you know, I just, I think if you guys can, I think you're giving it thought, I think, make it come to life a little bit more visually, and that'll get, like, the more that we can see, the more we can kind of productively respond to. So, I'll just kind of leave it at that, but thanks to the presentation.
Not a whole lot more to add, I suppose, rather than what was already said. I know Jimmy will hammer you on the design guidelines. I won't take that, that approach. I mean, I think, you know, that there's certain considerations that need to be taken into account for public spaces, fire stations, libraries, et cetera. The proximity to the neighborhood here, the, how it's on the boundary of the south, of Southdale versus in the middle, et cetera, right? So, I think overall, it's a better use of space than what currently sits there. And the more you can make it a destination for people around the area, the better.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I'm very excited to see what this is eventually going to develop to be and as more ideas come out. I fully agree with, you know, libraries are really important. I love going to the library. That's one of my favorite places, you know, even as a kid. And so, when I think about, you know, our neighborhood and Edina and this location, I think we need a statement, right? Something that could stand out to some degree, you know? Yes, we want to kind of fit things in into the architectural designs that are around, but everything around here is already box stores, right? There's, you know, Target, there's a strip mall, there's a Walgreens or whatever across the street, and then there's houses, right? So, something in the middle there that says, hey, this is a destination place, you know, come and see this really cool library we have in our Edina neighborhood. That'll be huge. The outdoor spaces, I love that concept too. You know, in this, in this region, what I could envision is some kind of a terrace kind of thing where, you know, kids are sitting outside, laying on the grass, reading a book. The sun is shinning down in the summertime, folks are just kind of hanging out with their dog, just reading a book, you know, by a water feature. You know, something like that could be super attractive. You know, I could just make it a afternoon, drive with my car, I guess, park somewhere close by, and then just kind of sit on the grass. So, I like that idea. So, outdoor spaces and developing the outdoor space, I think, would be great. The Art Center, I think, I'm sure there are going to be some really cool things. I know you talked about the pottery, right? There's probably a whole host of different things. I've traveled to a couple countries in Europe and in Canada and such, and how they kind of integrate art with their spaces is super unique, right? It's very interactive, you know? The kids are like hitting sound things, and it's like super tactile. So, I could see something like that. And, you know, as the Art Center gets developed, I'm sure they're going to have some inside-outdoor kind of hybrid spaces, right? It could probably be closed up in the winter, but open up in the summer, something like that. I know I did touch on the access from the Richfield side being easier, you know, there's less busy streets on that side. And I think you addressed, somebody comments, I think that Commissioner Feld kind of raised with the parking at that top level. I know that the grade is pretty steep coming down there, you know, and it's easy to kind of cross on 70th Street. But, you know, something about York, and it may not be in you guys' full control, of course, as I go to the city, but just making that, those crosswalks easier to access would be, would be good. And I'm not sure how you do that, if you make it wider or something, but something that would be inviting as folks cross from, cross over York. The last thing, you know, in some parts of the city, I live in Strackawell Park neighborhood, and when the city came to us to help redevelop the park, you know, they had a whole bunch of different designs. I'm not sure if you're going to sit with this one layout, the massing layout, and then you add features and kind of layer it on top, or if you're going to commit... you add features and kind of layer it on top, or if you're going to come with multiple different massing layouts and say, which one makes sense? So, that'd be interesting to see the next time you guys collect community feedback, what visuals you would share and what folks decide to do. Totally get, you know, from an environmental perspective, the Southwood facing and all these key things from, to get the, the energy, and I think the B3 certification and these key items is going to be important, but there's probably a couple of different ways of achieving that with different building designs. And so, I'll be curious to see if, if this evolves, or what it evolves through in the next iteration. So, overall, very excited. I think this is cool. It's an old library. It's needed an upgrade, and I think, once it's done, it's going to be such an attractive thing for the residents to go to. So, thanks again.
Thanks, Commissioner Miranda. Okay.
I think I've already said a lot of things that, I've talked about the water manager with our park director Perry. There are some great examples around Edina, I think. Is it the Bristol-Mayville Park that's northwest of Roman Board, where they've done the, it's a great inundation park, and it brings kids in, and there's, you know, little stones they can bounce across, and at our pool at the Edina Aquatic Center, there's the water management there, which is really intriguing, and there's an interactive, and you can see. So, I mean, I think there's, right, obviously, 100 different ways you can deal with the water, so I think you'll do that well. I think, and you've heard about the guidelines, and once again, this is a large site, it's like 400 by 400 feet. We try and break down these sites. I don't necessarily think this one has to be broken down, but I think it can be through crosswalks, connections from residential streets, even though it's the Target del entrance across the way. I mean, there's still ways that you can break it down without putting the street through it. And that's it for me. Thank you. Thank you, and I'm sure this is a lot of hard work with all the players involved, so I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Okay, so, I'm going to echo a lot of what other commissioners have said, because they made some really good points, but bring my own perspective to things. So, as I said, I've been going to the meetings, I went to the meetings pre-COVID, and this seems to really get rid of any good idea that those meetings had. They were very detailed, they went on for months, believe me, they went on for months, and there was just so much discussion and so many interesting ideas, and this just doesn't feel like that at all. So, I agree with Mick Johnson's critique. This is basically a very uninspired proposal from a public and civic perspective. I mean, we should demand more from our, from our government, and this is, this is not it. This is a lot like the new Southdale Fire Station that's going in, where it's an important use. I mean, obviously, a library and art center would be great. Our art center is, you know, has needed rehab for a long time. The library's needed rehab for a long time. Library is a center of activity in a city, as Mick had said, but this is a terrible design. Everything, the building, the parking, the location, or not the location, but the, the way it's set up on the property, the lack of connectivity, the fact that it doesn't really connect, you know, as Commissioner Feld said, you know, connectivity between the Richfield side and the Edina side. And yes, we have small buildings on the Richfield side, but that has not prevented Edina from having very large buildings on this border, because it's a very busy county road. So, let's see here. So, I mean, our residents, Edina residents have worked for a good, what, five years on the Southdale experience guidelines, Southdale guidelines in general, and this, this really doesn't take any of that into consideration. As I mentioned in the last presentation we had in front of the commission a few minutes ago, we have very few places in the city where we can create really great awe-inspiring places, especially civic or government spaces, because there's so, so little land that's owned by, by government. And this is a huge piece of property in our biggest commercial district, and the design is basically a suburban library from 1975. I mean, there's just nothing inspiring about it. So, how could it be improved? So, I mean, if you look at, I mean, you, the county has said that this is, you know, based on their climate action plan, but I don't see it. I'm on the county's transportation, what is it called? The Act of Transportation. I'm on the County Act of Transportation Committee. So, I know about the county's plans and, or at least their, their, their goals. So, we have a housing crisis in the city, in the county, in the state, in the country. We have a transportation crisis, and we have a climate crisis, and this proposal, as skimpy as it is, doesn't address any of that. This is quote "environmentalism as pretty green trees," which isn't really environmentalism, it's just that you like pretty things. And that is, again, suburbanism from the 1970s. So, rather than addressing climate change in any meaningful way, this is environmental mumbo jumbo. It doesn't really, this is not a solution to anything that will address climate change. So, what I would like to see, before I would approve anything like this, I would like to see, you know, removal of more surface parking, if you want to have a, well, removal of surface parking, have the building up against the street, have it multiple stories, have it mixed use. Why not have, you know, a coffee shop or something on the first floor? Why isn't there housing above it? The county has a huge, our former county commissioner, who has just resigned, was a huge advocate for housing, and affordable housing in the county, and this is the perfect spot for it, and it's county land. It's something that we can do, and yet, there's, there's absolutely no mention of it. We have the E-line Transit Station. The E-line is going to end up, for now, just west of here, although as far as I know, that still hasn't been finalized, and the city and the county and Met Council are still trying to, and Metro Transit are trying to figure out where the station will be. Theoretically, Simon Properties has to have it somewhere, according to a current agreement, Simon Properties has to have it somewhere on their property, but they can define where that is. Instead of being held under gunpoint from them and as to where they want to move it randomly, I think that it behooves the county to say, and the city of Edina, to say, hey, maybe this is where the county, maybe this is where the E-line destination should be. And then, you have people who can, who can walk and bike here from Edina and from Richfield, you can have people take the bus here, you know, because it's going to be a large library, it's going to be a destination library. This is the perfect spot for density, for population, for affordable housing, for transit, and again, none of that is here. So, so overall, I'd say on a scale of 1 to 10, this is probably a zero. I think this is probably the worst plan I've seen in front of the planning commission, and I think the county really needs to step up to the plate here, and they have not. Thank you.
Commissioner Felt.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to keep my comments a little quick, and then I have a question for Commissioner Miranda, and then, okay. So, I've been going to the Southdale Library since I was in sixth grade, so I really like that place, and then when I first saw that they were doing changes to it, I was like, whoa, they're like changing the library, like, I don't know. But, like, seeing this plan, I personally really like it. One specific thing that I like about it is the, the wetland zone, or like the, if there's like a body of water there. I mean, like, I see, whenever I study, I see like a lot of people that get up and just like walk around the library, but it would be really nice if like I could get up and just take a walk outside, it'd be, it's like really good. It's a good break for the brain, especially to be amongst nature, and I think it's a great substitute for the current playground of asphalt, the parking lot. There are like two rows of parking lot spaces that are never used, and I think this is a much better use of that. But yeah, I think this library brings a unique vibe to the area, vibe to the area. The current library does that, but it's more kind of like an extraterrestrial vibe. It looks something that's like, really. Every time I look at it, I'm like, it's very unique, but I think this one's unique in a better way. But then, my question for Commissioner Miranda, so how do you think like this property could better like address the climate crisis other than the things that they currently have?
You have a couple hours. Basically, as I said, and you know, some of the Commissioner Feld mentioned, you know, if you divide it into quadrants, for example, then it becomes walkable, because it connects Richfield with Edina, you know, York Avenue with Xerxes Avenue. You know, they, they have, you know, wandering things here or whatever, but again, that's very suburban, that's very old fashioned, it's not the way you want it. Nobody, you know, if you, if you look at wandering paths that are created for, you know, transportation use, there's something called a desire line, and you probably see this at school, where you might have this wandering path, but everyone takes, cuts across the grass, right? Because that's a desire line. People want, they want to get there as fast as possible, right? This doesn't do anything like that. It doesn't really address transportation. Like I said, the E-line Station could be here, so the Edina Transit Station could be here. I think the city and the county should ship in to make something that's more than just literally a bus shelter. It should be a destination. We don't need to have, you know, in St. Paul, what is it, we don't need Union Station, you know, we don't have 30 trains coming here every day, but I think we need something more than just, you know, a shelter, you know? And so, it could be, you know, part of the first floor of this. I mean, there's just a ton of things you can do. Like I said, Mick talks about our plan, which is for the entire Southdale area, we don't just like shove water out of the way or just pond it, right? It's like you create a linear park, a linear water feature, something that's splashable. You look at 50th and France, the new, what's the building called? The Nolan Maines, right? And they have this little, I mean, they're not, I don't think they're recycling the water there, but they have this little splashy water thing that goes through there. It's not just like a pond or something, right? So, it's, it's ways of, of using, you have the building up against the street so that people can walk to it, or if they're walking past it, it's something interesting, they can look in the windows, it's not something that's in the distance, and so, people won't walk there, people, everyone's going to drive there, right? You have a lot of, we have a lot of density going in that area, so people, more people would walk there than maybe do today. So, I could go on and on, but, and I'd love to talk with you about it, but that's what I'm thinking.
I really like how there's the greenery, because I don't know, I'm just looking at like an aerial map right now, and if you look at Richfield, it's greenery, it's suburban, and then if you look at Edina, it's very industrial, which I think this could be very good integration with it. And then, I was kind of wondering on the, like, the stormwater management, will that have kind of water maintained in it, since it's such a big runoff area?
The current strategy is reparative, so there's a long history at the site, which it was oak savanna originally, and then it was mined for its gravel, which most of the area is paved in that gravel, right? And so, the idea here is to bring it back to a landscape that works, so there'll be a whole variety of types of water management within it. It's not just particularly a pond, it's, there'll be some areas that are wet during some seasons, there'll be some areas that are dry during certain seasons, and it ebbs and flows with how it's managing the water. And the idea here is that libraries is education or opportunities for access to information, that that whole series of a condensed landscape of an oak savanna can really represent itself in the site. So, you may have areas that are oak savanna-ish, or you may have areas that are more lowland, wetland area, and managing water differently at different times of the day or the year. So, really making it a working landscape that you would experience different every season, or in some ways, every week, in terms of how it's acting.
Yeah, I was just worried that it would become a mosquito haven if there wasn't like management there. So, yeah, it's going to be here.
All right, thank you for the comments. I got a few, I think. I think I've heard the full spread and probably represent most of those, but I guess, you know, the overarching comment Commissioner Borstein brought up, it's hard to react to little detail, so I don't think it helps. And I guess we expect, you know, to have something rough, but a little more detail than this, like even if, you know, there were question marks of where things are going to be and/or how it's going to be configured, then we could at least provide feedback. But it does just look like a building and a hole in the ground on eight acres of prime, prime real estate in a super multimodal area with a lot of traffic and business. So, I guess part of my questions that we're back to, like, why did the county move away from the plans of Southdale is because it's kind of logical, there's that county service center there, having a library there, you know, we have the goals of kind of transforming South, like a shopping center into a center. I think a really cool library, art center interface with that was intriguing, and then it shifted back to here. So, I was pretty excited about what we could potentially see based off of all the old, you know, potential workings of the site, and I also just feel like we're, we're squandering an enormous opportunity, and that's where I'm like, maybe I'm, maybe an oasis in the middle of it is a good thing, but I feel like we're selling ourselves very, very short, where, you know, on the flip side of a public-private partnership with Centennial Lakes, who devoted a lot of space to managing water, they built a very intricate park around it and a lot of housing and a lot of commerce. I feel like you have the opportunity to do that in a smaller scale, but we're just building a small building on eight acres. So, with Richfield to the side and like the guidelines kind of suggest, there's a lot of opportunity for buffering that missing middle housing along the entire eastern half of the site. If you could rearrange a library to be more in the northwest corner and kind of extend out New York to kind of provide that privacy behind it of like this oasis, while it'd be nice to see like, you know, oak savanna and some green space arrayed along York and along a very busy, active area, so you're going to have, you're going to have to buffer that something more than, I guess, what's showing here, so. Just for specific details, you know, pretty much everything in Mick Johnson's review to incorporate, pull the sidewalks in, because they're still shown on this, is kind of all around the perimeter. Pull those in, if it's incorporating the bus stop, you know, could there be a drive entrance? One other note is, you know, to make the most of the site, have those drop-off areas for sure, but, you know, move, move all surface parking to something you can't see, like keep it under the building or under a set of buildings. But again, it's kind of hard to react to stuff here, right? I just feel like when you have eight acres of land, it's, it's the responsibility of the county and the city to make the most of it, and you look at neighboring parcels nearby, they generate 500 to a million dollars in tax revenue a year, and, you know, by putting housing there, you know, you can generate some tax as well as places to stay and stimulate the site a little more. So, I'd like to just see a little more use on that east side of the site, and maybe some more buffering on the west side of the site and shifting the library and the art center, but I guess the main overarching thing, too, is like, if we're going to do something like this, it definitely needs to be state-of-the-art in its appearance and its function. So, some of the things that interested me that you talked about was the, the net zero, you know, having lots of solar panels, really, really diving into the sustainability potential of what we're building. So, the more details you can show and give us examples of, the more we could react to. But my worry is, like most things, a sketch plan comes and then it's a formal proposal, and so, we, we won't have a lot of other helpful feedback between then and now, and so, I just, I worry we're kind of off the rails a little too much to begin with, and then kind of got fingers crossed until we see you again, but I wish you the best. Any other comments?
I mean, just listening to everything everyone's saying, do you think you, just, I think you guys kind of just kind of pick, like, how is it going to, like, how is something more going to kind of come, and just, so, you could go, you And just, so you could go, you could go the route that kind of Lou and maybe Jimmy were talking about by adding more to the site that connects to the surrounding built environment, connects to transit, maybe there's housing, I don't know, you could do that part of it. Or if it's going to be kind of just, there's going to be a building in that open space, can you kind of decide, can you take a stronger direction towards like what that space is going to be? Is it like a wild space? Is it an ecological, educational space? Is it a restorative space where people are going to go read a book or something like that? And like, how do you dial it up and bring it out so people can kind of feel what it's going to be? If it's just going to be maybe like a pond or something like that, that, you know, maybe it fills with water and then kind of dries up a little bit? But, you know what I mean? Like, I get it, I think we all get the practical purpose behind that, but, you know, can it, can it have a stronger theme? And then one thing that everybody was saying was, you know, kind of connectivity, like just seeing some connection through the site that's intentional, and Commissioner Miranda was talking about it and others, that allows people to move through it in a kind of connected more urban way. So, I don't know, I didn't have much to say at the beginning, but I listened to whatever he thought, I thought they had good points. Something stronger has to jump out thematically from the part that's not built, I think, to get people excited. That's just, but, maybe, maybe come back with something else and we can react a little bit more to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. All right, now we got one other sketch plan review. Thank you for your patience. My goodness. All right, we're going to keep going. People might stand on you though, Carrie, so. This is a sketch plan review for 4677 Street West. Director Teague will present. Thank you, Carrie.
This is in the Pentagon Park area to orient you. 77th comes through here. The building that you're seeing here is the Fred that's under construction, the large apartment building, about a little over 400 units. The site we're looking at was Phase Two of that project. This Pentagon Office building would be removed and about a 275-unit apartment on this area. And the building that we're looking at today was to remain on the site, and you may recall, as part of that project, the city obtained an easement for access into the Fred that would be located right here into the park in exchange, you know, for that current access over to the east. So it is within that, we extended the PUD district, guided in our comp plan for office and residential use. So what we're looking at here, this is where that Phase Two apartment building will be built. This is the existing building that will remain, this is the site we're looking at. And so this is where that woo-nurf was proposed in between those two buildings. So the proposal here this evening is to remodel that building into a charter school for kindergarten through fifth grade, about 550 students. And they're also proposing a gymnasium addition at the back of the building located here. So this would be adjacent to the new entrance to the Fred Richards Park. So here is that woo-nurf. This is the new apartment that will be built shortly. The idea, so within that PUD that we've expanded, the idea was for this building, you may recall, they were talking about doing some retail space on that main level with the office above to kind of interact with that woo-nurf and the residents in the district. So again, the proposal is to remodel that to a school, to change that use. The morning bus drop-off would be within that woo-nurf located here, you can see the double bus zone. So they would enter here and then exit out this way. This is the entrance into the Fred Richards Park. Parent pickup and drop-off happens on the east side, so they would enter the park entrance and stack this way. So a formal application would require an ordinance amendment to allow schools within the PUD 23 zoning. The way we wrote the ordinance was retail uses allowed within the PCD-1 district are allowed in that site. A revision to the overall PUD development plan, they would be requesting a couple of variances, setback variance for that gymnasium from 45 feet to 37 feet, and that building would be about 20 feet from the edge of the park entrance, the paved surface, because the property line is right in the middle of that entrance. So it would appear closer than the 37 feet, 20 feet again from that entrance. A drive aisle separation requirement from 10 feet to zero feet, we require drive aisles to have a setback of 10 feet from the building. So you can see here, the parent pickup and drop-off zone would be right up against the building. So some type of a variance required there. And also likely variances requested for building material on the building and transparency into the gymnasium. So again, there's the setback variance that would be required, the drive aisle setback. And then parking, we'll take it, we'll have to take a closer look at that to see if it's compliant there. So some of the issues to consider, again, the proposed use, as I mentioned, the idea here a year ago when this was approved was to allow retail uses in that building. The school wasn't anticipated, so it would be an amendment to that PUD. One thing this, so this is a decision that the HRA is going to have to make. This was part of a TIF district back in 2014, so it's the sale of property to a tax-exempt entity. So the charter school is tax-exempt, so as a condition of that TIF agreement, the property owner is not supposed to sell to a, a tax-exempt property. So it would be a decision of the HRA to eliminate that condition in the TIF master agreement. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that's an additional hurdle that they would have to go through. So some of the other concerns we have is turning that woo-nurf into the bus pickup and drop-off. Granted, that only happens a half hour a day, 15 minutes in the morning and 15 in the evening, maybe a little longer. So the majority of the time, it could still function as that woo-nurf, and we would suggest maybe pavers, some type to, to enhance that woo-nurf. Also concerned about the site circulation on the east side of the building, specifically the potential for stacking to occur into our entrance to the park. There's this pinch point here where people coming into the site might want to take a shortcut instead of going all the way around. So some concerns there with the stacking. Parking and traffic study would be required as part of this. We would have the traffic consultant take a closer look at how that would operate. And then the, let's see. Yeah, so concern about that park entrance with the gymnasium coming so close to the park, blocking view of the entrance into the park, blocking the views of the park. Sustainability, we would suggest that they should meet the sustainability policy, the intent, or they would ask relief from our sustainability policy that could be built into the PUD. But again, we would suggest that they should meet the sustainability policy with the gym. There is a floodplain in the back that would have to be mitigated. And building material, they would ask for variances in regard to building material for the gymnasium. So that's some of the staff issues that we've raised. I can stand for questions, and the charter school is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Glad you're standing for questions, literally. Anyone got any? Yeah, Commissioner Day.
Can you go back to the point about TIF funding, please? No, fun. Okay, so this would just, in order for this to be allowable, right, so they would have to be, go before the HRA, and they would have to explicitly say, we allow this, okay, okay. I know I had read through it at one point and went through it fast, but I wanted to make sure I was clear on that. It's a, I haven't seen before.
That would have nothing to do with any voter recommendation of ours, right? Ultimately.
Correct, yeah, you're just commenting on the land use piece of it, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, no, no, it's important to understand. Any other questions? I know per one of the reviews, there was an alternate location proposed of the gym. Would you like to just talk about that quick? That was from Mick?
Yeah, in their, in their packet, they did.
That option one and two?
Yeah, it's, I don't have it in this PowerPoint, but it's located more toward the street.
What the thought with that was?
I think they like this for the circulation pattern, maybe a question more for the, the school as to why they chose this location over moving it to the front.
But I guess Field Office's preference toward the front was to bring activity toward the street?
Right, that's right.
Okay, all right.
So...
Commissioner Felton?
The street to the right, who does that belong to?
Oh, to the right. This here, so the city has an easement for this entrance into the park. So it's owned by the property owner, Hillcrest, but the city has an easement over that to provide access into the park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see nods, but is that a nod as in a question, Quincy, or just a nod as in like, yeah, all right?
No, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there are questions, all right.
It's, it's really just like processing, you know, and it's more for the applicant, just like more details about the school itself, you know? But for Carrie, you know, nothing major at this point, still, still thinking through those pinch points. I thought that was important. The woo-nurf is something that I'm thinking about, but I'll, I'll just wait for the applicant.
Thank you, Carrie. Welcome the applicant team to the podium. If you want to just introduce yourselves and then, again, tell us why you're here, what you're doing, and why we ought to support it, and what else we can tell you.
Sounds good, thank you. Hello, my name is Carolyn Farrell, and I am the Executive Director at Seven Hills Preparatory Academy. This is Brent Peterson. He is the principal of the facility that we, I'm going to share a little story about why we're in the request situation that we are in. Seven Hills Preparatory Academy is a public charter school. We're, we are a very successful charter school. We have been around since 2006. We have two sites, so we have a site in Bloomington and we have a site in Richfield. So it was exciting to hear about the Richfield Library and the Hennepin County Library this evening. We are, we have over 1,000 students. We have 550 students at the Bloomington site and about 600 students at our Richfield site. We currently rent the Bloomington campus from a church in Bloomington, Cedar Valley Church, big beautiful church on 8600 Street. We have successfully leased from Cedar Valley Church for the last 17 years, and recently, in the last two years, the Cedar Valley has decided to open up their own faith-based school. And so that means they need the space that we are currently leasing from. So we learned of this decision over a year ago, and in the last year, we've been seeking new facility for our public charter school. I want to mention too, that two years ago, our school was nominated for National Blue Ribbon Award. It's one of the highest score awards in the area of academic achievement, and we were awarded that. We found this property in Adina, and it is so complicated to find sites for public charter schools, if you have experience with charter schools. It is very difficult to find property, and we fell in love with this property. So what we want to do tonight is, one, we're here to ask for the rezoning consideration to the amendment, and then we really want to talk about how we believe our existence in the site as a successful public charter school can really enhance and activate the Park Richard, the Park Act area. So what Mr. Peterson's going to do next is just talk to you a little bit about how we want to interact with that park and how we think it can help draw in further members from the community to that park area. So Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I appreciate your attention and your feedback at this late hour. It's great to be here. My name is Brent Peterson, I'm the building principal for our Bloomington location. And I've been with the school since 2006, so its story of growth and development and learning for our students follows my own growth, learning, and development, so. As a, we're a classical education public charter school, and so civic engagement and community partnerships are central to us as a community. So I thank you for the opportunity tonight to, to model and showcase that for our, for our students and staff. This is part of the process, right? So I really appreciate it. The primary reason that this site stood out so much to us is because of the, the space just to the north, the Fred Richards Park, the time, energy that the city is putting into that space, just, it screams activity, right? You want people there, you want people to gather. Our Bloomington site, right now, we have a city park just to our north that we utilize, that we would, we would love to utilize in the same way. We have students who use their recess time to gather trash in the park. We have staff members who come and ask me for magic erasers so that they can help clean off graffiti, right? We really see ourselves as stewards of the space around us. So when we were looking at some of the, the future designs for that Fred Richards Park, there's items in there like an outdoor classroom, there's other outdoor spaces for like a small, like yoga deck for like outdoor performances. Those kind of things, we think, as a, as an activity that's during the day during the school year, that students bring a joy, a life and an energy to a space that, that, you know, the rest of us old folks don't often, often do. So we think having, having young people that energy will, will help draw other people in, people that are going to live and work in the area. Having a school use in this area really adds another diverse element to it. And so we think that that is advantageous, and we look forward to your comments and feedback, and thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to introduce our, one of our architects on the project. This is Bess McCullough, and she's going to go through some more of the details.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank staff. You have a great staff here in Adina, and they've been very helpful in pointing us in the right direction and also giving us some real hints on where we may be missing the mark, from your design standards to PUDs, so, thank you, appreciate your help. And we also appreciate the help that the Commissioners have given. The site that you have here and the development that has taken place on the site is fabulous. So our hope is to have a very light touch on the site, and contrary to the variances and the things that we need to ask for a little lenience on, we actually hope to approach the site in a way that is very respectful of the work that has already been done to the site, planning for that site. To that end, we have actually brought on board and engaged Civil Site, who is the civil engineer and the landscape engineer for the woo-nurf and the site development that goes around the finch and the access road back to the park. So we think that's really important. I didn't know how I was really going to approach this tonight, and you've had such great questions, but what I'd like to touch on is some of the comments from staff, because I think those are going to be your same questions that you have when you're looking at what we have submitted tonight. And so, just kind of going through... And so just kind of going through what staff has questioned and talked about, I think the idea of changing the PUD. I know that this PUD is new. It's only been in place a year before this, the education use was allowed. So we're asking to have that reinstated. We don't feel it's an outright change to what was happening in the neighborhood. It was already there, and it got changed as part of the Fred and the Finch development. The interesting thing about this education use, when we started talking with staff and about regulations and requirements that we needed to meet, we also started talking with the owners and the developers. So the owner of our site, Hillcrest, owns buildings to the east. And then we also have the owners of the Finch. We've talked to them. We've asked them, "How do you feel about us having an education use here? Were you counting on this being restaurants? What was your intent?" And surprisingly enough, I honestly thought we would get a pushback on that. They're actually quite excited to have this use there. It is a different kind of making community. Its educational use is about community, and it is about bringing those families that are in those developments, giving them a place to go to school. And it's not just going to school, but it's the kind of school that I, I don't know about you, but that I was raised on where I walked to school. I walked down the block, and I walked with my friends, and then after school, we went to the park, and it's all right there. And so it's a natural addition to what is happening at the Finch and the Fred, we see, anyway. We, as part of the existing PUD, we've talked about the zoning. We've talked about this is just an amendment. Also in this area, it should be noted, we are kind of in the center of three or four very large residential massings, and they're a little ways away, but they're close. And in addition to those massings of residential areas, we also have the Cradle Club, Prairie Care, the Gardener School, and Kitty Academy. Those are all in a really close proximity, walking distance, that actually could serve as feeders. So now you're taking your kid, you've been taking your kid to daycare at the Gardener School, and now you're just taking them across the street, and you're continuing that education in a neighborhood feel. So we're really appreciative of Edina's push for education, and we see that in your design guidelines for the Southdale District as far as your approach to the district, promoting education, mixed use. Those are all things we've looked at and want to have on this site. We do want to say that Kerry was kind enough to send us over the TIF exception. We were unaware of that in conversations about buying this property. We know that that's there. We know there's an exclusion was granted for the neighboring Fred and Finch, because they too would have been part of this TIF. They were granted an exception. At least that's our understanding. But we have planned to go to the HRA and request some lenience and a change for that TIF. So thank you, Kerry, again, for helping us with the direction on that. Getting a little bit into the site and talking about, I'd first like to talk about what we're not changing, because it's a huge amount of what we're not changing, and although the new construction on the site is substantial, it's not overwhelming. So we are not changing the site plan, except for where the gym gets placed. We are planning to keep the watershed very similar. That is why we've got Site Civil on hand. We will be keeping the, and following the same restrictions that they had when they did that first design. That goes along with the landscaping is going to be the same. We have made, as you're coming down the Wunorf, staff was talking about how we will be parking, our intent is to park buses there. Our intent is to, and we have vetted this with Civil, is to have the, oh, thank you, is to have the the buses be able to pull completely off of that. That is a one-way street. We want to make sure for safety, fire vehicles, emergency vehicles, residents, we want to make sure that's always clear. So we have vetted this with Civil that we will be able to pull those buses completely off of that drive lane. So we want to be clear about that intent, and as was mentioned, this is a really small percentage of time those buses are there. In the whole scope of our entire year, it's about 1.94% of the time there'll be buses there. 170 school days, we're only five days a week. We're only, it's really closer to a half an hour, half an hour in the morning, half an hour in the afternoon. Most of those times are stepping away from heavy traffic times. They'll be a little bit after most people are going to work, and they'll be before they're coming home. So we think that's a good mix. And then additionally, talking about, excuse me, about the circulation for parent and pickup and drop-off. I know in the variances, we are very close to the road with that circulation on-site. This is very purposeful. What we want to avoid is any stacking on that, and it is our understanding that this is an access road. It is part of the, it belongs to the two tenants on each side, the two building owners, and an easement for the city. So, but we want to stay off of that. We don't want to have anybody parking on 77 and stacking to wait to drop off their kids. We're being very cognizant of that. That is why that piece is on the site and so close to the building. Additionally, it is also a traffic calming situation. We plan to have staff out on-site, moving traffic around the site and helping parents stay where they're supposed to. Everybody's in a hurry, but do our best to keep the parents where they're supposed to be. Keeping the access lane between the Finch and the access road, that is an easement there. We'll keep that clear of traffic by having the staff move parents slowly into the front parking lot. The, this is a similar situation to what the school is doing on their two sites right now. So this is something they are very experienced with. The, just want to make sure that I talk about all Kerry's comments. The, you brought up the reviewing architect's comments about where the gym was sited, and it's very interesting. His comments are completely in line with the design criteria, and we have, we had looked at that. The reason we have stepped the building back is because although the idea is to have an activated front to your building and keep everything forward, we are going to have parking on the site. That parking in the front is going to be for very brief amounts of time. Staff will not be parking there. They'll be in the back and in the shared parking underneath the Finch. So it's not, we don't feel the need that we have to hide the parking as much. Additionally, if we move that building back, we have this opening and this welcoming to the site, and we are inviting people both back to the park and back into our building. The difference between having that building down in front, if you are approaching from the west towards the building and you look back towards the park, the building being in front will block you almost entirely until you are at the driveway back to the park. By moving the building back, we open up that cone of vision, and we allow you to see back a little bit easier to the park. So it's a purposeful decision. We feel it actually is more in line with the general overarching principles of design that the city has. There are specific ones to this site, but that lends itself to that look. Additionally, and this goes to, jumping to the materials that we were talking about, we are going to ask for a little bit of a variance on materials, not just because we don't want to put brick or stone on the building, which I guess would be some people's argument, but we have a 1960s building. It's got a very interesting historic construction, very unusual. And it unto itself has a design aesthetic that's going to be really hard to react to. We want to make sure that's the thing that shines. That's the existing building. That's the really interesting part of the site. And so as we start to approach the idea of what do we do to the gym, we do want to add brick, but we want to keep it at the base of the building. We do want to add glazing. We want to keep it at the front door of the building and widen that to the face of the gym. The drawings that you're seeing here were our early developments so that we could get in for sketch plan review. What we are planning to do is, and what we have on the design tables now, is we have some fins similar to the ones that are on the building. Those would be on the gym. They would be in brick. But the most interesting thing that we are proposing is that we want to make the building disappear a little bit, and we're okay with that, even as an architect. I'm okay with that. Let's let that step away a little bit, and let's use some living wall on this building, particularly at the corner, at the southeast corner. Because at that corner, if we do a green wall and bring that around the building, we have the opportunity to have that blend in with the view of the park. So yep, we are definitely blocking the view of the park. I can't lie about that. But what I want to do is I want to make it so that the building, as much as it is a part of the existing building in the school, it becomes a part of the park. So that's, so there are material changes, but we think we have a really great plan for that. We do know that we are going to have to have a parking study done. We have already contacted staff, and they have given us a referral, and we have that proposal, and we actually were waiting for your comments. We want to hear what you have to say before we move forward, but that is our plan and our intent. Staff also mentioned that we are talking about sustainability, and I want to assure you, my career has been spent with a company that what we do is restoration, reuse, rehabilitation. That's what we built our company on that. And so we take it very seriously when people start talking about what is sustainability and how do we get there. And it, in general, comes down to things like we will build better, we will do better, we will have better windows, better HVAC. And our approach in the office is often to try to keep what we can keep. Don't fill the landfills. Don't tear something down. Don't waste that energy. Let's use what we have, which is the approach we're taking in this building. We will do the things that every good architect should do. We will have high efficiency HVAC. We will have LED lights. We will have sensors on our lights. We will have sensors on our flushes and our hand washing in the bathrooms. We will make the attempt to make sure that everything we do in the existing building is to the best level we can get as far as sustainability goes. But this is a 1962 building, and the likelihood that we would be able to ever interface and get this up to a standard that would meet B3 or LEED is highly unlikely. It just, it doesn't lend itself to that. But we know we're building a new gym, and we feel that it is our responsibility, and this was a miscommunication with staff, we feel that it is our responsibility to make the gym meet those standards. We would be shirking our responsibilities not to try to meet them, and we feel we can with the gym. So that is, that's a big ask. I know your sustainability program is relatively new, but I also know that this is the first existing building that has tried to go through this program. And I see it as a test case that we can learn from you, and what Edina sets out as their goals, and you can learn from us on that particular issue. I was, just a couple touches on the reviewing architect's comments. We, the site is constrained. It is narrow. The, it probably would have functioned a little bit better until the access road went in. I think that's constrained us a little bit more. And in his comments, he is setting out the guidelines in a way that I think is helpful and is also not site-specific. It needs to be, the site needs to be considered a little bit more, and we could move the gym to the front. I don't think it's the best move for the area, but, you know, we are willing to look at that. But I would say that the things that are important on this site that are maybe over-missed are the constraints. Two easements to the north. One of them is a fire lane easement. One of them is the easement to the building next door. We cannot build in either of those easements. We had planned to put the gym in the back part of the lot on the north side. That was floodplain. And we are highly aware that that is an inappropriate use of the site in any way, shape, or form. And so although we are putting the gym in part of the floodplain, it's about 2%, and we are making that up with more green space back at the park. Additionally, the, talking about glazing in the materials on the building, this needs to be a storm shelter. It's a requirement for the school, so we have to provide a storm shelter for the school. That is going to limit our glazing. It causes some other things to come into play that are design-wise that I think are important here. Yeah, and I think that that is just about it. Again, we really appreciate that you've stayed late and that you are still smiling, so that's a good thing. But we'd love to answer questions and talk you through our process.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. I guess looking around, any questions first? And maybe just reserve comments, feedback till then.
I could start off here. So thanks again for the presentation, very detailed, very thorough. I appreciate that. Just a quick question about the traffic management, you know, with staff coming out to direct traffic. So this shows certainly the flow of traffic when there's pickup and drop-off. I'm guessing if there are teachers and stuff like that parked at the school, where would they park? Because I'm kind of thinking that back parking lot is probably going to be filled with cars as well.
Well, so the, as a owner agreement that stays with the properties, the 4600 property has an agreement with the Finch for 40 parking spaces underground. That is in the agreement and part of the development of the site. So the teachers, about 55, 53, will mostly be parking underneath the Finch. So we have removed that traffic, that surface parking, which is part of the reason that I don't feel terrible about moving the gym back, because I know we want to protect and shield those parking areas, but that area in the front is mostly going to be for parents who are coming to get a sick child, who are, you know, it's that kind of activity in that front lot. We don't envision that being parked. And then any staff that can't park underneath will be in the back.
Gotcha. And so when the buses and... And so when the buses and the parent pickup, do they ever happen at the same time? Or is it really just like two different timeframes that we're looking at? So they never really?
The parents and the?
And the bus pickup drop-off? Like do they cross each other?
They're happening simultaneously, which is actually why we split the site. The original design and layout and traffic pattern on the site had everybody going down the Woonorf. We don't think that's a great plan. I think that's, we think it's too much traffic because there's going to be far more cars. So there's too much traffic in that area. And there's a coffee shop planned over there. And there's outdoor seating. It just doesn't seem quite right. So the buses will be on that side and the parents will be on the access roadside. And that's purposeful to keep them apart. Because they are happening at the same time.
Yeah. I guess for me, as I'm looking at this, I know that we have some schools here as well where we try to separate the bus routes from the parent pickup routes. One of these schools in particular is Countryside off of Tracy Avenue. And I think there might be a walkway or some kind of dividing element between the two pickup and drop-off areas. This certainly has them crossing on the same street, right? So I'll be very curious about just making sure that we reduce any opportunities for incidents. Safety is a paramount concern, of course, right, with kids. I'm okay with the gymnasium a bit back. I actually think that's probably a better location. And being it pushed forward. But the key thing, I think, is just making sure that the staff and the parent and the bus routes, all that activity is safe.
Yes.
In a very narrow site, you know, with kids, that's a big concern, I think, that we just have to always be mindful of. So that's my initial comment on the.
No, I appreciate that. That is our concern. And we actually, I think we'll get some insight from the traffic evaluation that we're going to have. And I think as we develop and start looking, we have not done our full stacking. I mean, we have a general idea how that's going to stack. I couldn't tell you how many we're going to stack right now. And I think that, I absolutely agree, that needs further development.
Any other questions? Yeah, all right. Commissioner Foul.
I suppose, I don't know where to start. I know. I'm sorry. I live across the street from an academy and the parent pickup and drop-off is a bit of a nightmare. I think there is no one. I'll see this nicely. And part of the parent pickup and drop-off is an easement on a city road that accesses the park. And it's difficult in the mornings and in the afternoons. And in fact, many of us do not leave our driveways between 8:30 and 9:30 in the morning. And we don't leave our driveways between 3:30 and 4:30. So I think that's always, parent pickup and drop-off is always an issue. They block our driveways. And so I think I'm, so I think what I'm missing here is, you know, we, this was approved for beauty for retail. And now it's a school, so there's no retail happening here. I see issues with the access to the park and the whole staging for the building. Yeah, so those are big issues for me. And then I got to say, and so I'm glad you talked about the mix-up. Because as soon as I read that you weren't, that there wasn't much of an intention to meet the sustainability guidelines, I was like, I'm not.
Yes, sorry about that confusion.
Yeah. Thrilled about that. And I get there's an existing building that's difficult to do, maybe especially on the facades, but less difficult on the roof. And definitely with the gymnasium. And the gymnasium takes up a quarter of the side. So I mean, I think there's, there's certainly sustainable sustainability guidelines around remodeling an existing building as well.
Well, there are. So in discussions with staff, Grace, there's two guidelines, two courses of action that we could take. And maybe you know this, so if you do, I apologize. But there's two ways we could approach this as far as your office is concerned. We could go B3, which you heard somebody speak to, or we could go LEED. They're very similar. Unfortunately, they have, as we approach 2030, which is our goal, there's some, many places that are trying to meet those sustainable goals that are hinged on 2030. As we approach that, these standards have become more and more difficult. So for example, our office does a lot of B3. It used to be that you would say you were an existing building and so you might not be able to change out a wall system. And this building would be a really good example of that. There's the window-to-wall ratio. There is almost equal wall to window, but they're broken up into two-foot segments. So there's no capability of trying to insulate that, right? So it used to be you would be able to get some credit. You were in an existing building. You weren't getting rid of building parts. So you got a little bit of a credit. You got a little break on how your HVAC was run and what standards you were meeting. They have now ramped that up and those no longer exist. So when you ask me to meet a standard in the existing building, I'm going to meet, I have to meet the same one as if I built that building from ground up. And we can meet part of it. I mean, there is absolutely a way that we can meet part of it. But if we go in and start doing something like B3 or LEED, which we have, the standard says we have to be certified, we will not meet that. It just is, it's infeasible, really, honestly. And which is sad, because it would be nice to be able to apply a bunch of those standards and get existing buildings up as far as they could go to be sustainable. But it's not possible. I mean, it's possible with a lot of money. I shouldn't say it's not possible. Everything's possible. You just need time and you need money. And a lot of it, if you're going to do it.
Are you, is there any work going to be happening on the roof?
On the existing roof? No. We were not planning on it. The roof is actually relatively new. Going back to my, I don't want to take it down and throw it away if I don't have to. The roof system that's on there, if it wasn't a flat roof, we probably, and the roof was a little bit older, we definitely would pull up the membrane and go ahead and add additional insulation. Be a perfect place to do it. But it is, it's just new. I mean, it doesn't make any sense from a financial standpoint, really. Additionally, this building construction is really interesting. We don't do this anymore because it's a really bad plan. But the floor plate actually extends from the inside of the building out. So we're bridging, and it's concrete and it's quite a ways out. So we have a long ways to have that warmth go in and out of the building. But that kind of construction, we wouldn't even do anymore. You know, it just wouldn't happen. But it's lovely. I mean, it's really, if you haven't been by the building, you really should go by because it is really lovely.
Commissioner Day.
Hi, good evening. I guess I brought up questions around the flow of traffic here. I mean, so I was having a hard time articulating this as well because I live right across the street from the high school. And that can be an absolute nightmare. Well, high school-sized middle school. So as I look at this plan to manage traffic, right? So it kind of looks like it's predicated on a continuous flow through, right? So you have one-way traffic and it looks like you stack, especially particularly in the afternoon, parents and, you know, in sort of, I guess, circular rotation. I'm keeping that moving. But I mean, in practicality, you know, from firsthand experience, it's not really what happens at schools, right? A lot of people show up early and sit and idle, right? And particularly in my neighborhood and many streets around the way. I think that has a chance to spill out onto these streets. Like so, I just see like a choke point here because you only have one way. And then unless you're allowing cars to like sit and idle in the parking lot and then wait their turn to come in when their student is ready, this flow doesn't seem to me like it would work that well. Perhaps we can, you can address that in terms of just, how do you intend to keep this moving without having just people just be lining up and massing, right?
Yeah. I know exactly what you're talking about. I've been by that, you know, it's every school has that same problem. And a high school has a bigger problem. Because now parents are driving and children are driving. So it's even worse. Nice thing is this K5. And they're not letting the fifth graders drive yet. So I think we're okay there. But currently, at the site that they're leasing from the church, I was shocked, but parents were actually following the, they have cones set out. They have a really good system with the staff, getting parents in line, getting parents seated where they're, or parked where they're supposed to. And it has proved to them to be effective. There's no guarantee. But I think, I think our goal with how we've arranged this parking is two things. Keep the cars off the Woonorf. So it's pedestrian, it's more pedestrian-friendly. And I realize the bark, the buses are there, but they're going to come in and park and they're not going to be up and down that road. Keep stacking off of 77. Highly important. Not room for it. It's a bad plan. And then the access road back to the park, we don't want people stacking there. I think in the morning, it's not as big of an issue if you were happy to have people stacking there. Because I don't, at that time of day, the likelihood you're going to have traffic back to the park is less. But in the afternoon, definitely a concern. Making sure we keep people off of that. We have, we have started. We haven't gotten very far. But we have started on the signage that we feel is appropriate to make sure that that traffic, to best of our ability, flows where it's supposed to.
How many students would it be attending K through 5?
About 550.
Wow, okay. And that's pretty much, at the end of the day, afternoon pickup, right? That's everybody's release pretty much at the same time? So that doesn't create that additional headaches with stacking?
They hold in the gym or whatever area. In this building, it would be in the cafeteria, because we have cafeterias on the first floor. So we hold in the cafeteria to release to the buses. And I do not know, and I had this once. The number of students bus to parent pickup?
I was just about to ask.
How many are you, are you seeing, what percentage?
I think it's about 40%, about 40% of the students bus and about 60% are pickup.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or do you still have some more?
No, I just think it's, I can just foresee headaches here and that the stacking would spill out on the 77th just with the sheer amount of people that would be trying to access a one-lane road and trying to circulate. I mean, just based off of experience around schools in general. But did you mention what's happening in the 6 through 8? Where are they going?
Oh, yes. So we have technically three sites through the Minnesota Department of Ed. So we have this K5 site. And then in our Richfield campus, we have a K5 elementary school. And we have a middle school upstairs, 6 through 8. And so the goal, so right now, the two K5 sites feed our middle school. And so we have 300 in our middle school. And then we don't have a high school option at this time. Kids typically go to Bloomington Public High School, Edina, Richfield, and then even some like Eagle Ridge Academy, some of the similar high school charter schools. Our goal would be that, so this property is three miles from our middle school. So the goal is that the students attending K5 in this Edina property would feed into our middle school, similar to the way that we're doing it right now through the Bloomington site.
So this is a different line of thinking, not the parking anymore. In terms of the parking lot and how that space is utilized, right? So you have the gymnasium. Is there any thought about, you know, utilizing that space more for, you know, including a playground or additional like space that could be used by the community during non-school hours? Particularly since you have quite a mass of residential areas over there, right?
Yes, absolutely. The playground wasn't our initial design concept and it may come back. We pared down a little bit. The gymnasium, the size of this gymnasium is actually probably a little bit large, you might consider for a K5 school. But the goal is to open that space up for community events, for activity, whatever it happens to be. And then should any of the local schools be searching for gym space, which it seems like they always are, they would be willing to have this open to that as well.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Is that a yeah?
You did it again. No, I'm still trying to process the parking path, you know? And I know you guys would think about this and this is a sketch plan, you know? But that's a real choke point. You know, like with the airport. In an airport, you know, yes, the plane lands, but everybody comes out at different times, right? You could pull in, you could pull in right next to the guy. He feeds up, he could just weave his way out. He gets, like, two lanes could manage to get in and out, right? If in an airport, it was stacked like that, you would be backing up until the last guy on the plane came out to get into the first car in the line, right? And so now, no, I'm just thinking, if the gym was further front, if an improvement in the parking situation, in the pickup situation could be adjusted, you know? And I'm not sure. So when Jimmy saw me like shaking my head like this, it's like I'm just trying to run the scenarios.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to have folks on the Woonorf. We don't want to have folks on 77.
Right.
Because that could be a concern, for sure. And so how do we ensure the safety and the onboarding and offloading of kids in a single-lane file? That kids might be coming at different times. And so I'm just trying to think through how to make that work, you know?
Well, we did, we did actually look a little at the parking with the gym forward. It really didn't, it just shifted the problem a little bit. It didn't, I don't, I don't think it really solved anything. One of the other things we did look at, and I shudder to say this, but it would mean another variance, but what the heck, we already have several. So the idea of instead of, instead of having the parents go back onto the access road after they drop their kids off, we would have a curb cut put in closer to where it is right now, actually. So they would just come through that parking lot and exit straight out. We'd make it a right-hand turn only. Which, I don't know if that alleviates everything, but it helps. But the, those curb cuts that close together, this traffic engineer's just, that's not a favorite thing. So we had talked about going and asking if we could have that just for in the morning and in the evening, when we are bringing kids in, dropping them off, and then picking them up. So that it would be just accessed at those times to help alleviate some of that problem on the access road.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's a real engineering challenge because I totally get the narrowness of the site. In terms of location for the school, I used to send my kids to KDAY Academy, and so I'm very familiar with that area. I think this is a great spot for it. There's not a whole lot of restaurant in that zone unless you cross 100 and you go on the other side. But it certainly could be a zone or a space where residents would realize that there's a lot of kids here, you know, kids going to daycare and kids going to K through 5. So, I'm, I'm open to the idea of this being zoned with a school designation, but certainly the narrowness of the site and just kind of tinkering through that, I think is my biggest hookup, hang-up. The Wu-Norf, I think, the percentage of times that the buses, I think you covered that, you know, the amount of time the buses are going to be sitting there, I think that's okay because the Wu-Norf cuts off a little bit north anyways, you know? And so, I think that's acceptable from my perspective. I'd love to hear what the other commissioners think. And so, everything, I think, seems to work well. I, I think you, you addressed Commissioner Fell's concerns, you know, it's a very old building, and to retrofit an old building to meet current heating and certain kind of certifications, right, is, is expensive. And so, you're trying to work within that space and your philosophy of let's use what we have, instead of tearing it down and building a new school. I think that's commendable, too. I think there's some value in using the same infrastructure. So, most things, I think, work well from my perspective, and the only thing really is just trying to think through the movement.
Yeah. We will go back and, yeah, before we, before we submit our next supplemental, we will definitely have that
Yeah.
Got through.
Yeah. I think that's kind of the high level for myself.
All right, maybe just go around, share comments, right? Or does anyone have any other questions? No? All right, Commissioner Fell?
There was just an article in the New York Times today or yesterday about the cost of climate change, and, right, it's just going to keep getting more expensive, so it begs the question, do we do it now or do we do it later? You know, maybe this isn't the right building for the school if we can't make it energy efficient. And I think my only, my only other comment is probably more as a resident, you know, I don't know much about the TIF, but the TIF was kind of delaying those tax payments to our public schools. And so, the irony of having the academy here ask for a TIF so our schools don't get paid is interesting, but that's just as a resident speaking, not as a planning commissioner, but I just wanted to bring that up. And those are my comments.
So, I guess I'm mostly just, I'm not going to repeat what other commissioners have said, but I have pretty much the same concerns they do in terms of movement of cars through the system, through the pickup and drop-off. And in terms of building reuse, I mean, building reuse is a good thing because an existing building is a building that you don't have to tear down and build up again. But on the other hand, like, if, if this were a wider piece of property and you could, and you built like a mirror image to the building and then had two buildings, then it would be kind of a better deal, I think, and, and it would be more environmentally sensitive. Because this is a narrow lot, you can't really do that, so you're trying to retrofit a building, you know, from the 60s, which is, as you mentioned, very hard to retrofit. And so, it feels like the best places to reuse a building would be someplace that's either more remote, where there's nothing else around it that you couldn't really change anyway, or something like in a, in a downtown or commercial district where you, you know, you want to save, you know, old buildings or something, or a monumental building or something. And I don't really think this fits into that, so, and it just leaves a lot of parking there and, you know, it doesn't contribute, I mean, a K through 5 school is going to be mostly inwardly focused during the day, and it's not going to drive people to, you know, be there. I mean, you don't want adults there with your kids, so, you know, I, I just feel like in this particular district, we're trying to create that sort of activity, that sort of, you know, movement of people, and while you will have kids going to the park and such and, and the adults escorting them and everything, I don't feel like this is really kind of what we planned for this area as, as a city. So, so I have, I have a lot of reservations about this. Thanks.
What's your day? Yeah, Quincy just pointed, you know, again.
I'll keep it quick, I'll keep it brief. I mean, my, yeah, my reservations are, I've already expressed it, just really logistically trying to figure out the parking and based off my own experience with how that flows. Things, it's just, it's just a difficult spot, right? And I understand that you're trying to address the challenges the best you can, it, it's just, I mean, it's, there are a lot of hurdles to overcome here in terms of the building makeup, the sustainability piece, the parking and stuff like that. I think it's a commendable use, I think it's a good spot for a school in terms of, it's, you know, proximity to the park, proximity to a lot of the, you know, housing to the north. So, I think all, all good things, but yeah, the, the site, it just, I feel like you, you just made it difficult on yourselves, not that you've, you know, I mean, I'm sure that every, every site comes with its challenges, but this one, it just, the way it's pinned in here just seems, you know, ripe for, for future problems. I don't really have an issue around, again, the land use and stuff like that, but in just in, in general, the logistics of how this would be carried out, reservations around that, and unless there's a better proposal around the traffic now, because the way it's currently constructed, I just, again, I see, I see it backing up on the 77th with 60% of those 550 students arriving by car, I almost, I, I think it's inevitable, I don't think you'll have a scenario where it doesn't spill out on the 77th, the way that it's based right now, so. I would hope, I mean, it's going to be some very creative thinking required to maybe figure that out, but right now, that's, that's my biggest hurdle, is just trying to figure the, is trying to not impede traffic around there during that time of day, so.
Yeah, I really don't have that many, I don't understand schools as well as the rest of the people because I don't have kids, and so, thank you for the informative presentation, actually learned a lot from you.
Thank you.
But I'm going to kind of punt and defer to the rest of the commissioners on this one. Thanks.
All right, yeah. I don't have much else to offer either. I, I think it's a cool use that was unexpected, but I think all of us are like, how, how can we get behind making this work? And I think it really gets hung up in some of the logistics, and if you can prove those out and demonstrate a solution next time, and I'd encourage you with that traffic study to kind of lean into that expert, to offer up some guidance of how to do it, maybe there's certain tweaks with, I mean, also exiting the site, I feel like it'd benefit having two lanes, one to turn right, one to turn left, because I could imagine in the mornings or during drop-off times if people are queuing and you're trying to turn left onto 77, you might be waiting a while, so, you know, lean into them for some creative insight about how to keep the flow going, and then, yeah, just trying to think of, how, how do you separate and just keep a bunch of people moving through that site is a challenge? Otherwise, you know, how that Wu-Norf and everything else was conceived, I mean, most of us pictured a retail use and kind of something with more activity lining the access to the park, and this doesn't answer it, but in the same vein, like you mentioned, you know, it's using what we have there, and I think we, we all are pretty in favor of being responsible in that way. So, if you're going to use what you have there, it's like you're going to just have to get even extra creative to make it work, and not cause issues with other users, so. I mean, one thing with the Fred, even before when it's a golf course, it's like, no one knew it was back there. And I have a feeling with how this is unfolding, not, not necessarily all, it can't all rest on your shoulders, but I have a feeling whatever you do there, it's still back there, and how do we advertise and celebrate that it's there and use it? But having a school there and having students, like my kids plenty of times go to different parks and explore the land, so I think the park would actually get a lot of use where I don't see necessarily the need for you to have a playground on site, but to take advantage of what's there, and I don't know, like, that gymnasium, it's probably one of the, you know, I tend to see things differently from Mick and his review at times, and I could go either way with that gym location if it can help solve that issue of logistics and queuing. So, if it helps to move it to the front, I think you can do some pretty cool design to kind of integrate it into the look of the building where it doesn't look too obtrusive because, again, it's a narrow site. Otherwise, best of luck to you, and if there's anything else that comes up in the meantime that we can offer, I mean, we'll take emails and...
Oh, great, we'd appreciate that.
Yep.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Any other comments? No? Yeah.
So, as, as far as the advertising, the park goes, would there be any reason that residents or people around the community couldn't come park in your parking lot, not during non-school hours?
Oh, we're considering the, we're considering that whole north parking lot, actually a shared parking lot between the school and the park. We would, we would, we, yeah, absolutely, that's, it will be maintained by the school, so it's no removal and those kind of things, but we're thinking that just because of how the site gets used and it's K-5 and teachers are parking under the finch, that's, that's absolutely our plan. Yep.
Okay. Because I'm even just thinking of like, you know, even a sign that points and says to the park and stuff like that, because I know, I mean, when I first moved here, I didn't know that park was there.
No.
It's just, it's, you know, surrounded by tall buildings and the highway and stuff, and it's hard to know, so if you're driving by on 77th, you wouldn't even really be able to tell right now.
Right.
I mean, the Fred dominates that, that entire area right now. So, yeah, to have access and parking to go to the park would be really nice, and even just, like I said, a simple sign or something like that, too, is a sketch plan, but...
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for staying silly.
Oh, wait, I saw him go up.
Just, just, just brainstorming, if you didn't have the gym and you converted some of the internal rooms on a lower level to be a gym, would that mess up your economic model?
Well, we are just, we actually tried that, that was one of our, one of our thoughts. And the problem is we have very low ceilings, so we're, we're stuck there, and we are absolutely maxed out on space. I mean, we have enough rooms, we could add more students to classrooms at the, at the capacity they, the school has now, but we're, yeah, it is a tight little building.
Okay.
But thank you, I appreciate that, that's great thinking.
Thank you, guys, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for sticking around. Have a great evening and morning when you get home. All right, well, that concludes kind of the main business, two public hearings, two sketch plan review meetings, and now we have chairman member comments, look around, yeah?
Okay, the talk of donation center made me remember of this place I used to volunteer at, it's called Bridging, and basically, I think they have a location in Roseville and they have a location on Nicollet Avenue, a bit past like REI, but they basically take in like any household items of any like level of usage, and then they have like their own like repair site, like in, within their building. They're a nonprofit organization and they take in furniture, like I said, household items. This one time I saw a jean couch there and I was like, wow! And then, and then they give the furniture to families that are transitioning out of homelessness, homelessness slash poverty, so I feel like their cause is very good. And then the volunteers and employees I met are all very great people, and I think if you guys ever have anything to donate, just go over there and they're great.
Have you ever done their, their winter fundraiser, the bed race that they have?
Sure.
The mattress racing? It's fun, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I know people that work for, or used to work for Bridging and have donated items there before, but they have a, at Buck Hill, I think it is, at their tubing run, they have, or they cover mattresses in like plastic, and then people, there's like a team of like four people that like bobsledding, you know, or like that you race down the hill, and that's pretty cool. It's a big fundraiser for them, it's a lot of fun, so, look into that.
Yeah, Commissioner Fell?
Two comments. One I brought up in the beginning of our work session tonight, at the last city council meeting, and if you haven't listened to it yet, it's worth listening to, they are trying to repeal our approval of the variance for the Maison Green lighting, and primarily because it's lit and can be seen from far away, and Councilmember Jackson even mentioned like wanting to kind of study 100, but it might be, there might not be time, you had mentioned earlier, but I'm wondering about a, looking through our, our zoning about lighting and sign lighting and lighting in general.
Thank you.
Second comment.
Yeah.
Second comment is congratulations to Commissioner Hugh, you just won the mayor's recommendation for your work in high school, so I wanted...
They actually interviewed me about that, and then, oh, thank you. They interviewed me about that and they asked me about planning commission, I was like, wow, I can talk all about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, the parking committee had a meeting yesterday, so, so we're working through ideas, we're still pretty early on, you know, the first year meetings were about learning about all the city documents and what can I think of that word? Plans and, not processes, it was a P. Policies, I couldn't think of the word. Plans and policies, but, so we went through that, the previous meeting, and then this time we were kind of just brainstorming for ideas for what, you know, what, you know, what other cities have done for parking, what we could do, how we're different from other cities, how different parts of the city are different, you know, you know, you can't treat, you know, West Edina, for example, the same way you treat Southdale, right? So, so we're, we're, you know, looking into how are we going to approach parking and how are we going to approach it from different parts of the city and, and from a staged process, and so it's, it's pretty complicated, so, but we made some good progress on it yesterday, so. Our next meeting's going to be in January.
Thanks for the update. Getting work done already. Anyone else? Yeah, Commissioner Day?
This will be quick, I had meant to share this a couple weeks ago when I first came across it, but I thought of it as we were talking today. John, Johns Hopkins came out with a study a few weeks ago about how narrower traffic lanes could reduce, help reduce the risk of traffic collisions and, you know, accidents, pedestrians being hit and whatnot, and, you know, we talk about this often, and it just, it's more, it just reinforces what we say, right, so that on, on speeds where if people feel they have more leeway to make mistakes, then they drive more recklessly. And I, I thought about it because I went in for a rundown 66th Street yesterday, and when you are, before you go over across to the, the park, right, where the, the water park is and everything like that, and go across the lake, that's, there's a nice sidewalk and everything there, but 6th wide open, and, and again, no sidewalks, no protected bike lanes or anything, perfect spot for something like that with the width that they have there, and, you know, as we talk about parking, keep, we take development and stuff around the city, it's just something for us to hammer on all the time, because it's, you know, I, I just, the risk that I, I would never let, like, if I, if I had kids, I would never let them traverse Sixty-Sixth by themselves, you know, on, on a bike or something like that, and like, for me to be, I don't feel uncomfortable running on many roads, but that's one of them that makes me feel uncomfortable, and the speed limit's there twenty-five, and they're not going twenty-five, and so, anyways.
Thanks for sharing. Maybe just one quick comment, I mean, the difference in sketch plan reviews tonight, I think we've seen it other nights, too, where we've had very, very little detail, and then a lot of detail, and, I don't know, I know you kind of encouraged, like, you know, we used to get too much detail, and it's like, hey, simplify it, but I think we all don't want barely any detail at all, it's kind of hard to react to things, but that's just kind of what I felt like, we didn't have a lot to add to this last one, because they kind of painted the picture, for better for worse.
Yep, very true, when that was, you know, it was a different planning commission at that time, you know, when we created the design guidelines, that was the intent, it was a developer to come in with a blank sheet of paper, and what can we do, kind of thing. We don't want to go that far, we want to have something, but it's probably somewhere in the middle of what we saw tonight.
Yeah, just comment, any other chair member comments? Staff?
Nope, the Maison Green appeal was mentioned, council will make a decision on that next week.
Did city staff talk about the work plan? Was there updates on our proposed work plan?
Uh, yes, no decisions made, council then makes their decision at their first meeting in December.
Okay, stay tuned. That's it? All right, now for the best time.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So moved.
Meeting has been adjourned.
Oh, my goodness. Wow, you guys stuck around, where'd it go? You guys get another mayor's award for...